I would like to call this meeting to order at six, okay, it's 5:59 and a half. I'm just saying, a little early. Should I let it clock to six? I'm okay? Okay. It's six. We may start. All right, let me get the agenda one here. Okay, as we call the meeting to order, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Sharkey?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll do roll call of attendance. Ms. Warner, I understand you're in the cloud. Would you start, please?
Okay, real quick, I do have an agenda item to pull, just so when you go back to me.
So that was broken for me. Okay. I'm going to ask you to repeat that, Mrs. Warner. I think you, were you just roll calling in?
Yeah, so I don't know how effective this will be to remember to come back to me. So I do, before we vote on the agenda, I do have an item I want to pull. When you go back around after the roll call, just come back to me. Thank you.
Duly noted. Okay, thank you.
Matthew Potinsky.
Amy Carney.
Mike Sharkey.
And Donna Lewis. All right, we have approval of the agenda, and as Ms. Warner noted, she would like to amend the agenda that we've presented. Ms. Warner, you want to?
Yes, I'd like to put eight A. Can you hear me?
Eight A?
Eight H. H for half.
Okay.
And that is just one item on the personal, so I'm putting eight H for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Any other amendments to the agenda as presented?
Technical correction.
Okay, and I want to note that we have a technical correction that is in the board docs under eight H that is up to date and accurate. So board members will be getting a hard copy of that. Go ahead.
I'd like to pull eight F.
Pull eight F, okay. Thank you. Any others? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented with the exception of eight F and eight H from the consent agenda. I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll read the meeting decorum. Citizens attending and/or participating in the Scottsdale Unified School District meetings either in person, virtually, or telephonically are required to observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to members of the governing board and staff. Unauthorized remarks or demonstrations from members of the audience, yells, outbursts, and/or other disruptions are not permitted. All right, we begin with student and staff recognitions and celebrations.
Well, good evening, President Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, and members of the governing board, students, staff, family, and community members in attendance tonight. We're so glad you're here to celebrate some recent outstanding achievement by our students and staff. This evening, we're going to start in the world of athletics, and I would like to invite our district athletic director, Nathan Slater, forward to help us with this beginning celebration.
President Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, members of the board, Dr. Menzel, Ms. Wagner, thank you for having us this evening. I'd like to introduce the Palm and the Cheer Team from Chaparral High School up to the podium, two separate teams. We have two celebrations on some state championships for Palm and Cheer at Chaparral. We also have Principal Joshua here. Thank you for coming, Bubba. Good to see you. Congratulations to Coach Chelsea and the Chaparral Girls Cheer Team. On November 22nd and 23rd, multiple schools competed in multiple spirit line competitions at Veterans Memorial Coliseum. Our Chaparral cheerleaders won the Division Two, Division One, Two Game Day Small Cheer Competition, scoring 123.5 points, a full five points higher than second place Williamsfield. The Chaparral cheerleaders are now back-to-back AIA Small D1, Two Game Day State Champions. These athletes have worked hard all season, attending football games, basketball games, pep rallies, and all this as opportunities to promote school spirit at Chaparral. They use these as well to help prep for competition routines at the state and national levels each season, and we're very proud of their hard work and dedication. We can't wait to see what their future holds. Coaches joined this evening by Gabby Kahada, Maddie Rigots, Maury Gerdy, and Ariana Lubke. So congratulations to our Chaparral Girls Cheer Team State Champions. Also, congratulations to Coach Sierra Silk and the Chaparral Palm Team. On January 16th and 18th, at the traditional state championships at Veterans Memorial Coliseum, the Chaparral Palm Team won the Division Two Palm State Title with a score of 195 points better than number two Desert Mountain. This has been an incredible, record-breaking season for Chaparral Palm, as they also won the D1, Two Small Game Day Title, the first in program history. The Chaparral Palm Team also recently went to the Nationals and competed against the best of the best from all around the country. They once again made program and state history by being the first team from Arizona to win a game day national championship. Coach Silk is joined here by her team leaders, Brandy Atkins, Bella Crutchley, and Cameron Murphy. Thank you again for being here, ladies. Congratulations on an amazing season, and congrats Palm and Cheer at Chaparral High School.
Congratulations, Firebirds. And we do have more birds in the celebration this evening, and I would like to invite to the podium Fine Arts Coordinator, Michelle Irvin, to tell us about accomplishments from the world of music.
Thank you so much, President Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, board members, Dr. Menzel, and Gladys. Could I bring Finn Feldman up? So I want to take a little moment to shine a spotlight on this young gentleman, also from Chaparral High School. It's a big Chaparral night. Finn here was the only student in SUSD to make the All-State Jazz Band on trumpet, right? Finn, we're so proud of you. Your hard work, your passion for music, your dedication has really paid off. I do also know that, don't you go to Cocopa every single week and help the band? I know that because my daughter teaches there, so she's like, he's there every week. So the All-State Jazz Band actually opened up the AMAA Conference, and his group performed, and you had a very large solo during it too as well. Your teacher, Mrs. Moreau, wanted to be here, but they're rehearsing for the musical tonight, so she wanted to do that. So can we give all a big round of applause to Finn Feldman, trumpet player from Chaparral High School? And now we have another Chaparral. What are you doing there, Mr. Pantier?
Hanging out.
I love it. Can we bring that amazing Goldust Avenue Singers that performed for us at the opening? And they're bringing all their swag, with some additional swag they got this past weekend. The Goldust Singers, if you can believe it, were in New York again for the, you know, New York Strong, Sing Strong, right? Sing Strong. And they brought second place again against the entire nation, second place, two years in a row. Incredible as an a cappella ensemble, which, as you noticed, they had zero accompanists other than themselves. Incredible enough. But could I also have Sammy Zell step forward? Yes. And Sammy, will you turn around so the board members can see you and all that swag in your arms? This young lady here won the Outstanding Soloist for the festival and arranger. She arranged. Was that your piece you arranged for the performance today? So the performance piece, she arranged that for the ensemble. So, and you guys won the arranger last year too, I think too, right? And to see two years in a row and a different person doing it, unbelievable. Can we give a huge round of applause to the Goldust Singers under the direction of Sammy Brower, Dr. Sammy Brower? Unbelievable, unbelievable. And a very quick shout out that I was shown just before, they received superior ratings this last weekend in both Goldust Avenue and the Magical Singers, yes? So, Bravo, extra applause for that. Want to give you guys some encouragement.
Great job. Well, Michelle, don't go too far. So, congratulations, students, fantastic. I am always blown away by our talent here and love to showcase it. And we have the most amazing coordinator of fine arts. And Michelle Irvin not only does a lot to ensure that our students have amazing experiences, but she does more than what other people realize. So recently, Scottsdale celebrated its 71st Annual Parada del Sol, and Michelle is on the committee. She helped wrangle up 30 different entrants from Scottsdale Unified School District in the parade. We had amazing participation. Michelle has known that, for the time I've been here, every year I've begged to ride a horse, and every year, risk management said no. And so I got a text one day, and Michelle said, how do you feel about being the parade marshal? And I said, well, I never thought about it. She said, well, you get to ride a horse. I said, I'm in. So I want to acknowledge Michelle for all of her hard work, not only in the fine and performing arts, but in terms of elevating excellence in every way she serves SUSD, and I'm going to present you with this challenge coin. All right, we're not done yet. We have a couple of other celebrations this evening, and from the Saber Cat community, will be the first one, and Dr. Sakos is going to kick us off, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Good evening, President Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, board members, and Ms. Wagner. I'd like Saguaro High School senior and Student Advisory Board Extraordinaire Brick Schultz to come meet me at the podium, as well as any Saguaro administrators and teachers who have joined us here this evening for this presentation and celebration. We talk all the time about being a school district that offers a world-class, future-focused education to our Scottsdale Unified Students. We have also, we also have data that shows that the longer a student stays in SUSD, the more academic successful they are. Such is the case with Brick Schultz, who has been an SUS student since his preschool days at Pima Elementary, from Pima to Mojave Middle School to Saguaro High School. Brick has established himself as a leader in the community of which he is a part of. Whether he's leading the Voices Saguaro Varsity Chorus as its student club president, leading the student cheering section at the school sporting events, leading off, off, leading off at the plate as part of the state championship Saguaro baseball game, or helping lead the local Make-A-Wish Leadership Council, being a leader is in Brick's genes. And it probably won't surprise you to learn that most recently, and he had to double down on his studies and was an honors student, an advanced placement student, an AP student, and he dug deep two summers as well as taking on tough subjects such as honors chemistry and American Arizona history to learn a year's worth of subject matter in just four weeks. It is little to wonder then that when it is searching for its 2025 Jenkins Youth Leadership Winner, that Scottsdale leadership settled on Brick. I'm not sure why I'm getting emotional, but I'm fumbling up here, but I've gotten to know Brick the last couple of years on Student Advisory Board, and to see him grow is absolutely incredible. Miss A, that's your job to shed a tear. And Mom and Dad, I know you're out there. Named after longtime Scottsdale High School Social Studies teacher and former Mayor Jenkins, the Youth Leadership Award is given annually to a student who best exemplifies Mayor Bill's example of being unassuming, genuine, community-minded leader. Congratulations on your award, Brick, and please accept the SUSD Challenge Coin as a way of recognizing your outstanding career with our school district and our many It's amazing to see these students who join, and Dr. Menzel can attest, the Student Advisory Board. And I can't say that Brick was ever shy, but they're quiet and shy when they join, and they find their voice. He's always had a voice, let me tell you. And so it's just, I'm really proud to see him accomplish everything he's accomplished. So staying with the social studies and Saguaro theme, I'd like to invite to the podium someone who's been, we've been seeing a lot of, lot of. You know who you are, Ashley Crose, come So we just keep inviting him back because he keeps achieving such remarkable things. Ashley has been chosen for the Arizona Council for the Social Studies 2025 Isidore Starr Distinguished Social Studies Teacher Award. Here to tell us about what that means is Sherri Stiegel, a former social studies teacher educator herself at our own Cocopa Middle School. Sherri!
Dr. Menzel and members of the Scottsdale School Board, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm Sherri Stiegel, as Dr. Sakos said, and this is Brian Flanagan Arthurs from Salt River Schools. We're here on behalf of the Arizona Council for the Social Studies to recognize Mr. Ashley Crose from Saguaro High School. We recently awarded Ashley with the Isidore Starr Distinguished Social Studies Teacher Award at our state conference on January 25th.
This award is given in memory of Dr. Starr, the former president of the National Council for the Social Studies, who believed in the power of implementing the inquiry method in teaching social studies. This prestigious award is only given to that rare educator who consistently exhibits excellence in teaching, shows initiative in developing and implementing original and imaginative lessons, uses engaging instructional strategies and resources, is given recognition and acclaim by colleagues as a leader in education, demonstrates curriculum innovation, disseminates ideas and techniques through presentations, and mentors educators and students, and utilizes a variety of community resources to enrich the learning environment. Ashley is the epitome of what the Isidore Starr Award stands for. Dr. Menzel wrote in his letter of recommendation for Mr. Crose, "I can say with confidence that he exemplifies the technical competence, intellectual rigor, emotional intelligence, and care and concern for his students that put him among the highest performers with whom I have ever had the privilege of working."
Allow me to highlight some of Ashley's accomplishments and recognitions. He developed the SUSD district-wide curriculum for teaching the Holocaust and Genocide Studies. He's on Saguaro Site Council. He's the department, the Social Studies Department Chair as a teacher leader, and the advisor for the National Honors Society there.
Also, because Ashley cares so much about education of not only his students, but he also cares about students, parents, and other educators around the state and beyond, he has an incredible list of professional awards and influential boards on which he sits, which include the Gilder Lerman Arizona Teacher of the Year for 2024, National Board for Professional Teaching Standard Certification, both in original and renewal, the Shofar-Zakhar Award by the Phoenix Holocaust Association, the AZK-12 Center chose- Award by the Phoenix Holocaust Association, the AZK-12 Center chose Ashley also to serve on the statewide teacher solution team. Also, he is for the, the Phoenix Holocaust Association Board of Directors and Education Committee. He's also on the Arizona Jewish Historical Society Education Committee. In addition, the NAU Martin Springer Institute Teacher Leader Cohort, the Arizona Department of Education's Holocaust Education Task Force, and he is now on the Board of the Arizona Council for the Social Studies.
Finally, Ashley is one of only 24 nationwide facilitators for training teachers using the curriculum. He collaborated in developing with, for the Echoes and Reflections Organization for excellent and critically acclaimed Holocaust education. Ashley Crose truly embodies all that describes the Isadora Star Award. I am privileged to know him and to have previously worked with him and to call him a friend. SUSD is blessed to have him. Thank you so much.
All right. Ashley, it is said that we stand on the shoulders of giants. And I understand that you have a couple of mentors here tonight that you would like to recognize.
I do, and thank you for having me back. And I'll make this short and sweet because that list kind of made me feel exhausted myself. So I wanted to recognize the two people that hired me 23 years ago at Saguaro High School. So I have my two department chairs from 23 years ago, Ms. Linda Pearl and Ms. Lisa White in the audience. So I appreciate that I'm coming. And thank you to Dr. Menzel, the board, my school admin, and colleagues. Thank you.
And Ashley, here's another challenge coin in your ever-growing collection for your excellence and everything you do for SUSD and our students.
Thanks so much.
But we're not done. We've saved our largest celebration for last because it's part of a month-long celebration that we're going to cover in a few minutes. I don't know how long exactly, but our College and Career Readiness Director, Amy Downs, has the honor of introducing our next celebrations this evening. Amy?
Hello, governing board members, President Lewis, Dr. Menzel, and Ms. Wagner. And Amy Downs, your College and Career Readiness Director, which also includes career and technical education and widely important right now in our society, right? This is the ideal time to recognize our programs and our teachers. Our programs provide students with comprehensive preparation for both workforce and higher education. CTE student completers are eligible for industry certifications, internships, and SUSD's own CTE graduation distinction. We offer 18 different pathways, and all of our programs embed academic standards with technical and professional standards. The largest misconception about CTE is that it's not an academic program, or that CTE students, CTE is for students that are not seeking further education. But nothing could be further from the truth. CTE is valuable to all students and provides skills needed for competitive advantage in today's society. A great example of this tonight is the 2025 CTE U.S. Presidential Scholar nominee from Scottsdale. The United States Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 by executive order of the president to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduates. For the career and technical education component of this program, students are initially selected based on their accomplishments and their career and technical education program. Students are nominated through the state's chief state school officer, and they can nominate up to five candidates who meet all requirements for U.S. Presidential Scholarship. I would like to call up Yulia Musat. Yulia is one of the five nominees to be selected for the state of Arizona. She has completed Chaparral's Finance Program in 2024 and remained DECA president this year as a senior at Chaparral. Yulia takes all AP classes, including Mandarin 5, perfect for business pursuits. Other AP classes are calculus, biology, English for literature, and composition. Her options for the future are wide open, and one might wonder, what are her plans for next year? Would you like to say anything about that? You don't have to, but we're going to find out by May, right? Where your future is going. So I would like to give Yulia a coin and wish her all the best in the national selection process happening this month.
Wait, wait, one, one moment, Yulia, one moment, because that's really exciting. But there's more news, because she is also the only SUSD finalist for the Arizona-based Flynn Scholarship. So we want to wish you well in that as well.
Mr. Renfer also would like for us to mention another student he had, who is Dante here with us tonight? Come on up. Dante Marcuzzo. Dante is another amazing senior who's taken our culinary program and is currently completing a second year of the Business Pathway. He recently earned second place in the Business Finance Series at the DECA competition. So congratulations. SUSD is one of a handful of districts in Arizona that offers the Finance Pathway. Learning about personal finance and the principles of commerce are important to all citizens. It also helps students achieve the Arizona Seal of Personal Finance on their diploma. Teacher Mason Renfer from Chaparral High School was recently spotlighted for his high-performing finance program. Mason has made the transition from a career in banking and finance to education in the year 2020, and he is now teaching our Finance Pathway at Chaparral. Mr. Renfer also earned the NGPF Distinguished Educator Award. This is a lifetime award that educators earn by passing six different next-gen personal finance certification courses. He was also nominated by his students and won the Fall 2024 Personal Finance Lab Nominate Your Teacher Award. Please come up, Mr. Renfer, for a challenge coin. Another teacher CTE wishes to celebrate is Ms. Tarnisha Tilson. Ms. Tilson has worked very hard to implement our new district-wide CTE internship program, and she oversees the new community volunteering program as well. Her attention to detail and high ethical standards make her the perfect fit for these two roles. Ms. Tilson is also our CTE Long Public Safety Program teacher. Her criminal justice classes are the best in Arizona, according to more than just me. Crime scene investigation industry experts and Maricopa County Justice Department employees have commented, reached out to me proactively to tell me about her program being one of the best they've seen, best for testing skills, mock trial performances, et cetera. This year, CTE was able to fund a new mock trial courtroom so that they could participate in teen court, where students hear and decide real cases of their peers. Our labs offer a variety of forensic simulations to make the class highly hands-on and work-based. The signature program is at Chaparral, but next year it's also available to Saguaro students via a bus for Period 1 and 2, just like our culinary program. So please join me in celebrating the second-year teacher who's knocking it out of the park. Next, I would like to recognize Shelley Alfieri-Brown, Arcadia's Engineering and Coding Shelley joined SUSD two years ago and has taken her two programs to new heights. She has attended as many student CTSO leadership events as possible, and she has chaperoned a group of students to every single Girls Get IT event in the last two years, which is a lot. She has raised the bar for student expectations and sets a great example as a role model of all things possible for her students. Her high standards and tireless commitment deserve a round of applause. Thank you, Shelley. Next, we have a few CTSO celebrations that I'm going to lump together because if I read off all of these, we would be here another hour. So our CTE students performed very well at the Future Business Leaders of America's Regional Competition, January 22nd. SUSD had participants from Arcadia, Chaparral, and Saguaro, who competed in categories ranging from accounting to supply chain. SUSD had five third places, two second places, and four first-place winners. Richard Norris, Desert Mountains DECA advisor, he is continuing the legacy of a top award-winning marketing program. He has chaperoned and led several dozens of students to our international competition level over the last four years since he joined CTE. This year, his team won six third places, two second places, six first places for performance awards at the DECA event, and also won over 20 awards in the written examination category. With much appreciation, I present a challenge coin for all of the FBLA and DECA teachers that oversaw these events and prepared their students to compete. That would be Shelley Alfieri-Brown, if you'd come up again, Mason Renford, Dave White, Richard Norris, Matt Bonert, and Anthony Vogel, who is a former CTE finance teacher of Yulia and a current central CTE teacher on assignment overseeing curriculum and staff development. Hats off to all of you. The last CTSO that I want to recognize is our Technical Theater teachers. They hosted a local intra-district CTSO Skills Challenge. If Chelsea Brosnan and Dr. Tim McCandless could come up, please. These two very dedicated theater and CTE teachers organized our first-ever Skills Challenge amongst our own programs in order to better prepare their students for the state competition, and their efforts paid off. Their CTE winners included two superiors from Coronado for stage management, scenic design, an excellent rating for Coronado Stage Management, Chaparral superior rating for their costume construction category, Saguaro superior for scenic design, and the Saguaro Tech Challenge Team was titled Saguaro Scene Queens. They tied for first in events that included knot tying, threading and sewing machine, cable coiling, which they had the fastest time, and a lighting competition. Congratulations to the students and to these teachers for preparing them. Last but not least, and this person is not here, but I still wanted to read this for you. I wish to recognize Chef Jack Trier for his Culinary Arts Program. Chef Trier has taught the signature program on a block schedule of two periods a day in order to increase the quality of the labs and the time spent in the kitchen. This year, Chef Trier has hosted three district events related to strategic Goal Four, community and business partnerships to promote and improve CTE programs. These events provide a work-based learning for all of his students. The events were well-executed and delicious. With Chef Trier's dedication to excellence, CTE is now installing a fully furnished bistro café, complete with a new freezer and walk-in freezer, new barista machine for hot beverages, upgraded instructional lab equipment for the students. Chef Trier could not be here due to teaching at SCC as well, but he will be hosting a spring event, like a CTE open house, and we will be extending invitation to the board to join us. I hope we see you then, but please give Chef Trier a round of applause for all he does. In closing, I just wanted to say CTE is vital for students to explore the world of work and prepare for post-secondary, whether it's college, apprenticeships, or workforce. CTE helps students gain skills for employment. It is relevant and will always be relevant, so thank you for allowing us to celebrate our students and faculty.
Thank you, Amy. It's always a joy to celebrate our students and our staff, and that will conclude our celebrations this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Thank you, everyone. What pride you bring to us. We next have a special presentation. It's the Student Advisory Board for 2425. It's a presentation on Arcadia High School, Chaparral High School, Coronado High School, Desert Mountain High School, Saguaro High School, and Scottsdale Online Learning.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Menzel, Ms. Wagner. My name's Fiona Riley. I'm the president-elect for the Student Advisory Board, and we're here today to give you a little Student Advisory Board SAP update.
So tonight, we'll be beginning by discussing about the leaders presenting at tonight's meeting, followed by an MLK Assembly and Dinner reflection, which will be done by Sid here, and then a subcommittee to wildly important goals or WIGS update, followed by a teen town hall upcoming dates.
Student Advisory Board leadership. I'm the president, Victoria Bucua Conti. This is the president-elect, Fiona Riley. The senators from each respective school are Avery Liu from Arcadia High School, Harper Healthman from Desert Mountain High School, Brick Schultz from Saguaro, Claire Joe from Chaparral, and Niam Pacheco from Coronado. All of them do a wonderful job.
So let me tell you a bit about the MLK Assembly and Dinner that the Student Advisory Board went to. We had an amazing speech from Speaker Bakari Sellers, bestselling author. He talked about where we've come so far in like the civil rights movement and then where we have to go from here. It was an amazing speech. We had some food. I thought it was pretty tasty. And then we had a speech from a newly-elected mayor, Lisa Borowski, and we had some Scottsdale City Council people present there as well. So it was a good time to network, meet some new people, and have some good food.
Yeah. For subcommittees, we work with the district for leadership and tasks with coming up with the widely important goals. For academic excellence, we have Dr. Dawes Karan. College and Career Readiness, we have Mrs. Amy Downs. Technology and Communications, we have Dr. Watt and Christine Harrington. Climate and Culture, we have Ms. Cron. Safety and Security, we have Mr. Friedman. Faculty and Committee, we have Mr. Rochele. This is a new committee. For academic excellence, by May 2024, create promotional material to highlight the day in the life of a high school student, to work with our partners in teaching, and learn the communication departments to create videos to shadow students and include reviews in course offerings. So far, our updates include met with a cinematographer to brainstorm logistics and creating additional content, content, develop criteria that showcase academic excellence, student-developed success in overall dynamic programming, in-progress meeting with principals to determine
I will be briefly talking about the College and Career Readiness. By May of 2025, there will be an increase in the number of ECAP components to be done at all high schools rather than on, for students on their own time. For example, resume writing, internship investigation, Scottsdale-area alumni chats with recent graduates for post-secondary exploration, followed by student presentations to other students on CTE programs during the day. And a brief update is students need to meet with their administrators about finding time during the day for ECAP activities and Career Development Day, a possible solution for a two-period block, to be allowed to begin activities of interest on early release date. And students will be designing a day to invite And students will be designing a day to invite career coaches from Scottsdale Civic Center Library and possibly the Rotary to assist students at lunchtime at school with essay writing and career matching activities in CCR platform.
For the climate and culture committee, our WIG for the year was to create and participate in three podcasts to share students' favorable experiences in the district. So, so far, we've met with communications to try and brainstorm ideas for each podcast. We've identified some potential filming goals, and our first podcast was actually filmed a little bit ago. It was not Leon and Brick. It was myself and Brick, and we met and filmed on February 5th.
So, in the technology and communications subcommittee, by May of 2025, SUSD will increase the availability of resources for students regarding how to use AI properly in a classroom environment. And the update, we decided we're going to do this by making learning resources and activities available through Google Classroom, as most students get their homework notifications and other stuff on that, making it convenient. And resources are in the process of being created. I saw some of them being displayed. They're pretty good. They'll focus on our Magic Schools AI program and trying to see how students can use AI without plagiarizing or getting in trouble, and how to use it constructively in a classroom environment.
I'm lucky enough to be a part of the Safety and Security Subcommittee, and our wildly-important goal is by May of 2025, we will have begun implementing new strategies to reduce vaping on campus, as well as have a quantitative decrease in vaping incidents. So, for our update, we reviewed data on incidents of vaping at the middle and high school level and looked for patterns like the location, like where the vaping incident took place, as well as the grade level. We also discussed ways to address the root causes of vaping issues and connected struggling students to support services, for example, social workers and psychologists. We think that what underlies our whole goal and the strategies we're taking to achieve it is that substance use is an incredibly complex issue that relates to mental health, addiction, and social pressures. We want to help all SUSD students find the resources they need to get help.
Next, we have the Safety and Security Continued. So, we had an Escape the Vape Community Event in collaboration with SUSD Support Services, Blue Zones, the Youth and Family Services, which is the Scottsdale Mayor's Youth Council, and the Scottsdale Youth Substance Abuse Coalition. So, we had, I was on that panel, I was honored to be there. I sat alongside a doctor from Honor Health who kind of went over the health risks of vaping, primarily talking about vape-induced lung disease, which is something that we're seeing on the rise, especially in youth, due to their lungs not being formed completely and being exposed to those chemicals. We also had a member of the Cancer Society of America come and speak about legislation that he has passed regarding banning flavored vapes. And then, we just went over some things that parents can do to kind of start that conversation with their kids on how to dissuade them from trying vapes and continuing using vapes.
And now, to talk about another wildly-important goal, facilities. By May of 2025, we will be surveying high school students regarding facilities improvement and what can be used in consideration for a future bond. In addition, we will be establishing a criteria to implement art in school bathrooms in order to reduce vandalism on school property. And a quick update, there's going to be a development of survey for high school students, and then in process of establishing a criteria for bathroom enhancement and hopefully reducing vandalism, if not prohibiting it.
Now, for the district, upcoming teen town halls. Arcadia is February 18th from 11:45 a.m. to 12:20 p.m. Chaparral, February 12th from 12:50 p.m. to 1:40 p.m. Coronado, February 25th from 11:45 a.m. to 12:35 p.m. Desert Mountain, March 5th from 2:30 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And Suoro High School, March 6th from 8:50 a.m. to 9:50 a.m.
Thank you for listening to our presentation. If there are any questions, we'll take those now.
Thank you for your excellent report and all the work that you do for our district across a lot of different domains. I'm interested to see the bathroom art when it's ready. I'm trying to imagine that. But the AI topic caught my interest, so I'm curious, do you feel like it's clear to students currently when AI is allowed to be used in an assignment, for example, to kind of provide feedback on a first draft or to brainstorm research ideas, and when it puts you into a little bit of risk around academic integrity?
Yeah. So, on our technology subcommittee, I'm on it with Sid, and we had a pretty big discussion when we were first beginning about disseminating information about the resources that SUSD provides. We had a conversation about how Magic School isn't necessarily publicized to students. I know a lot of my friends didn't know about it when I told them about it, and we thought that a large part of that was maybe teachers not quite being comfortable utilizing the technology quite yet. So, we do think that that is a divide that we're trying to bridge, the divide between what students want to do, but maybe they don't want to get in trouble, and what the district is actually trying to help them understand and help them use. So, that's definitely a big step we're taking, is trying to figure out where the problems lie and where that disconnect is.
Great. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Warner, just being mindful that you're there. Okay.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Great job, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What a wonderful fill of energy in the room from our students and staff. Great job, everybody. Our superintendent's comments are next.
Thank you, President Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, and members of the governing board. Just a few additional items this evening. First, yesterday, I was able to attend the School Connect Summit, which was held at the Footprint Center in Phoenix, along with members of our leadership team. It's a truly amazing event, bringing together educators, nonprofit, business leaders, and a faith-based community to talk about how we work collectively to do good things for students across the state of Arizona. One of the things that they often do is highlight student talent, and it was a real point of pride when the Coronado Marching Band provided some of the student entertainment at the very beginning under the direction of Brett Bell. As you know, they're an award-winning marching band, and what I heard was rave reviews from my colleagues who were just blown away by our talented students, and so I just want to give a shout-out to them. I was certainly the proud superintendent of SUSD at that moment. The last thing that I want to highlight is that, you know, every month, there are things that are featured during the month. February is Black History Month. You've heard a review of Career and Technical Education Awareness Month. Last week was School Counsel Appreciation Week. And so, while we haven't called them out specifically, I want to do that now to say we are so grateful for the work of our school counselors and the support they provide for our students. Digital Learning Day is on February 13th, and tonight, we have with us Sergeant Kevin Bingham. National SRO Day is on February 15th. So, Sergeant Bingham, if you could come up here. I do have a challenge coin for you, because we appreciate our SROs. And then, last but not least, the end of the month, 24th through the 28th, February is National Public Schools Week, and we will be celebrating all of the great things that our public schools are able to do in creating a special community here in Scottsdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. All right. That moves us to public comments. I'll read the statement. "In compliance with open-meeting law, the governing board may not discuss or take action tonight on any matters raised during public comments that are not on the agenda. However, the governing board members may respond to direct criticism, ask staff to review a matter, or that a matter be placed on a future agenda." Public comments will be conducted in accordance with Board Policy BEDH. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes. The screen will indicate the time. Please be prepared to close your comments and relinquish the floor at the conclusion of your time. The board asks that each speaker please introduce yourself by stating your name and whether you live within this school district for clarity of the record. We thank you for your time and attendance here this evening and your cooperation in following the meeting decorum and protocols. I will read the name of the speaker. When you hear your name, could you please come to the podium? I will read the name of the next speaker to be ready on deck. Once you start speaking, your time will start. Our first speaker tonight is Jeff Ratte. Did I say that correctly? And Luke Howland on deck.
My troubles began four years ago. I was blocked from summing at Arcadia High School IV. Although the substitute was instructed both verbally and in written subplans to refer to certain students by different names and gender pronouns, and those displayed in synergy rosters provided students are transgender, the substitute repeatedly addressed and referred to these students by their incorrect name and gender. A week later, Dr. Menzel's office listed letters from these trans students. Here's one. Even though there was a note to correct my name, my dead name was said more than any other name in class. He read the note in full, including the dead name aloud several times, then continued to say my dead name about six other times, corrected by me and the class. He also said, "Isn't that right, dead name?" We had corrected him several times. It makes it seem purposeful. He also deadnamed Max at least one. As a result, all of my future assignments were canceled. I was told I would be blocked from Arcadia until those trans students graduated in two and a half years. I went to the district office and met with Amy Goff. She told me I would have to serve the suspension and that I should stay away from the school. I did for two and a half years. I then went back to the district office to meet with Alexis Wilson, the Director of Human Resources. I told her I just wanted a meeting with the new Arcadia principal to explain to him I have nothing against transgender students. She stalled for months and lied to me. Then she blocked me permanently from going to Arcadia. I met with Dr. Menzel, who reversed that. He promised me a meeting with the Arcadia principal, who called me three days later and said, "Well, maybe I'll meet with you sometime next summer." When I relayed that to Menzel, he responded, "At least you got a chance to talk to him." Two weeks later, I was fired for constantly arguing and verbally harassing the district staff. Last January 9th, a federal judge in a decision that is the law of the land said it is unconstitutional for a school district to force a teacher to use trans-identified, student-preferred names and pronouns. He ruled they are violating that teacher's First Amendment rights and freedom of speech, and free speech retaliation is forbidden. As I stand before you, Dr. Menzel refuses to allow me to summon the Scottsdale schools, refuses to allow me to be a paid coach, blocked."
Luke Howland, and then we'll have Mike Bendert.
Good evening. My name is Luke Howland. I'm the owner of Rides in Motion and co-founder of E-Bike U, an online safety program for young e-bike riders that teaches rider safety, rules of the road, and e-bike maintenance. If you don't know already, e-bikes are transforming how students get to school, but with that surge in popularity, we're also seeing a significant increase in accidents and injuries. I know SUSD has banned e-bikes, but banning e-bikes on campus doesn't stop students from riding. It just leaves them uneducated and unprepared. E-Bike U is not only for the kids, but also the parents, many of whom don't realize that e-bikes aren't just regular bicycles. A 14-year-old with no formal training is essentially operating a motor vehicle in traffic with no guidance, and we are seeing the repercussions. That's why we created E-Bike U. We're already working with e-bike companies, speaking with local law enforcement, offering free courses at private schools and communities to help spread awareness. We also talked to SUSD Safety Director Josh Friedman, who sent me here. E-Bike U provides structured education on e-bike laws, defensive riding, accident prevention. We have the ability to go beyond an online course, provide onsite learning, attend and host events, and teach kids how to ride safer. Now, we are just asking for the support of the community. We are bringing schools the opportunity to be proactive and implement real solutions that protect students rather than just protect the district from liability. Let's move beyond the bans and take real action to find a way to implement safer riding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke. That brings us to Mike Bendert and Pietrina Pensabini next. Did I say that right? Okay.
During the approval process for the Middle School Planning Guide, you discuss the honors class offerings, which only apply to a small percentage of students. What about the other students in SUSD? Remember, Sharkey, you said you were a data guy. Well, here's some data. Last year in SUSD, 8,100 students were not proficient in ELA, 9,400 were not proficient in math, and over 12,000 were not proficient in science, yet over 98% are passed on to the next grade or graduate. Assuming only elementary students who are highly proficient in subjects should take honors classes. Across all SUSD 5th graders, there are an average of 300 students who are highly proficient in either ELA, math, or science. That means over 1,100 5th graders are not highly proficient, and 600 of those are not even proficient, yet they will be passed on to middle school. At Yavapai Elementary, 74% of the 5th graders are not proficient in reading, 82% not proficient in math. At Tonalea, 78% of the 8th graders were not proficient in reading, and 89% were not proficient in math. At Coronado, 74% of the students are not proficient in reading, and 83% are not proficient in math, but 89% will graduate in four years. Yavapai and Tonalea proudly say they are avid schools. The Planning Guide lists avid classes as electives. The purpose of avid is to help students succeed academically. Newsflash, it's not working. The Planning Guide has a couple of sentences about interventions and remedial help for students who are not proficient. There wasn't any discussion about those students entering middle school who are not prepared for even the basic coursework, let alone honors classes. Why not? Dr. Menzel never misses an opportunity to take a few top students to the board meetings and showcase their academic achievements. What about the thousands of students who are not performing at grade level? You never mentioned them. Doesn't their education matter? In grades 1 through 3, you learn to read. After that, you read to learn. Passing them along isn't doing them a favor. You're setting them up for struggles throughout their education and lifetime. Sharkey, I challenge you to find the root cause of this dismal academic performance and fix it. So much for engaging all students in world-class, future-focused learning. Elevate excellence? What a joke. Parents, wake up.
Hi, everybody. My name is Pietrina Pensabini. I am an SUSD alum. I had the benefit and privilege of attending Anasazi, Aztec, Mountainside, and Desert Mountain. I know firsthand the importance of public education. I'm a community member, a lawyer, a PTO president, a daughter, a volunteer, and a wife, but the most important title that I hold is Anthony's mom and Mia Bella's mom. I love it when my kids' friends call me by that. Like many of you, for me, my children are my entire world. I'm wearing a shirt today that states, "Never underestimate a public school teacher." Shocking to some, I'm not wearing this to be political. I'm wearing this because it's such a true and powerful statement. I remember Mrs. Cheveria from Anasazi, my first SUSD teacher after I moved here from New York. I remember Mrs. Hubbell from Aztec, Mrs. Brooks and Mr. Tim Brooks from Mountainside, Mr. Tartar, who taught me choir from 7th grade through my senior year in high school, Mrs. Norieger, Mr. Ormsby, Mrs. James, Mr. Cedarstrom. I'm in my 40s, and I've completed doctorate-level degrees, and I remember and cherish my marvelous SUSD public school teachers. I say this all because each of these teachers and administrators created relationships and impacted my life in a positive way. I say this because my kid's school community, Anasazi, is faced with detrimental news regarding our assistant principal position being moved to a .5 and losing our preschool program. As we all know, relationships and love for education start at an early education. We also know that we are worried about numbers for enrollment. I am sure that the SUSD board and administrators have extensive knowledge regarding the importance of strong bonds and lasting relationships built with trust with children and families to have effective results. This is going so fast. Listen, I feel like if we're all about because kids, it's important that we don't cut important positions like assistant principal to .5. It seems counterintuitive and counterproductive, and this is not just a plea for Ms. Martin, but a plea to reconsider all of the AP positions that are being brought down to a .5. They're really important. They really care about our families. They really care.
Thank you, everyone. All right. We are now on item seven, information discussion item. It's fiscal year 2526, maintenance in operation, and district additional assistance projections.
Can I interrupt? Because we didn't get a chance.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I did that again, didn't I?
That's okay.
All right. Sorry, Shannon. Just give me a minute. Any comments or responses or questions or follow-up from the board? Sorry about that.
Thank you. I would just like to touch on what our last speaker brought to our attention, because I too am very concerned about this, and I have emailed about this, and I have asked for the board to be provided with, you know, the proposed site plans, and we have not received that. It's very important that we understand what's going on and what the public knows that we do not know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. Any other comments? Okay. Dr. Potenski.
No, I was.
I'm sorry. Ms. Warner? Any comments? That might have been just a microphone.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
No. Here we go. I'm ready. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So to the mom who just spoke about the reduction of the APs, I hear you, and I thought this last year, I will fight it again this year. I think it's absolutely a disservice to our sites and to our students and our teachers to be reducing assistant principals and really any site leadership, and so thank you for coming to share tonight.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Warner. Any other comments, board members? Okay. Thank you for generating those ideas for future agenda items. All right, we are now ready for the fiscal year 2526 MNO and DAA projections. Shannon, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, members of the board, Dr. Menzel and guests. Tonight, we are taking another look at our fiscal year 2526 MNO, maintenance operations, district additional assistance, or capital funds for next year. I think it's important to start out with, when we look at our budget and we look at our goals and prioritize what to have in the budget, we look at two main things. Goal number three, attract, hire, develop, support, and entertain highly qualified, passionate, and talented professionals, as well as generate and utilize resources to maximize educational opportunities in order to ensure organizational health. I want to start out by talking about, we have two overrides within our budget that provide additional funds for us. Our voters have been incredibly generous with these two overrides, and so the first one is the maintenance and operations override. That was a voter approved in November of '23. It started this current fiscal year that we're in. They last seven years, but after five years, you have to have it renewed, or it starts a phase-out of that override. So we are good for a few years. Before that, we would need to renew that or begin that phase-out, and it provides about $22 million in additional MNO revenue for the district. It does wonderful things for our district. It maintains our current class size ratios, so we've kept those ratios at the levels they are, continues to provide opportunities for students to deepen their understanding of fine arts and athletics and extracurricular activities. I think that was shown in abundance tonight with all of our awards and celebrations with our athletics and fine arts, continues to provide competitive teacher compensation, an emphasis on technology, and continuation of professional staff development. There are no admin costs that come from this. It is strictly within classroom and putting dollars directly into the classroom. When we look at our MNO, the main thing that drives MNO and how much revenue we have is what is our average daily membership, or ADM. One of the questions that we've been looking at and things we look at is, what is the trend? What's happening with our ADM? And as you can see, it's really hard to kind of project what's going to happen, because our ADM has been really all over the board. COVID impacted us like it did everybody else. We've been making a comeback from it, but we still see that decline. The one thing that I look at is, what is our average change and what was our change last year or moving into this year? We've been reducing it by about 380-ish between the average and the change within this year. So that's really the number I went with when looking at, how much should we reduce our ADM for next year, going off of what that average and that change for this year. Looking at where our budget was last year, this is the FY24 final revision and where we are estimated. Now, there's a little bit of a time difference here in that final revision happens in May. Everything's reconciled, 100th day is done, numbers are, 100-day numbers are in and reconciled. We are not quite there. We had our 100th day at end of January. The numbers to be able to put this together for the 100th day and verify and make sure they're right, we're a little bit off, or we're not quite ready. So estimated revised will change a little bit between now and May when we do this again. But as you can see, the total student weight count, and what that is, is you take your ADM, and you get different weights depending on grade levels, but you'll also get different weights for group B weights, students with special needs, free and reduced, gifted. With that, a couple of the big things that you'll see is, our amount per student has gone up 2% as it legislatively needs to. We've been going down about 500 or so students in the total weighted count. Our budget balance carryforward was about a million less than what we anticipated. So that's a little concern for me and feeds into what we're thinking about for next year. And then we have a, water savings is like energy. It's money that we transfer into cover for maintenance properties that we've done, like with water, with solar, those types of things, energy savings. So the next part we wanted to look at when looking at this is, did we project pretty close for this year? When we were looking, you know, doing this last year for, at this time last year for the 2425 budget, did we get pretty close? And I'm really happy to see, yeah, with the ADM, we were. I was honestly pretty shocked to see that our variance right now is only eight off from what we projected. So that was really good news to see. I don't like that it's down. I wish we were, you know, had more students and we were projecting it up, but that was good to see. I'll take it. I don't know that that'll ever happen again, because when you're projecting this far out for next year, it's hard to tell. Just little variances, like I said, our carryforward was less than what we were hoping to carry forward, so that made a little bit of an impact. But all in all, not too far off from what we thought we would be when we did this last June for the adopted. So we move into, with that knowledge, what do we think will happen for next year? And we're still looking at what changes. There's even been changes from when I did this a few weeks ago and did budget projections. We now have our free and reduced and our gifted weights, our numbers for that, that was higher than what we, quite a bit higher than what we were originally projecting. And so we have increased that some. Membership, ADM, we reduced by a little bit from where we had originally, so we're down to 381 on that. But because those weights, additional weights for gifted and free and reduced were higher than what we had originally projected, we've reduced that to 483 loss for next year. That equates to about $2.9 million in revenue. So that's the hard part of this, is when we have that kind of loss, it is a really big impact to our MNO budget. We anticipate the increase of the student base or the base level of 2%. That should be what it is, which will put it at, actually, it's 5,100. And then maintenance and override, 15%, and the capital override at about $14.4 million. What we don't know, well, there's a couple of things we don't, we don't know what our ADM will be for next year, but we also don't know what's going to happen with Prop 123. I think the state is still working on that, and I'm hopeful that something comes forward with it, but we're getting a little bit closer to when we have to make a decision on that, and there's still a lot that has to happen. So what we're looking at is what happens if we don't receive that additional funding? What happens if we do? Right now, we get $1.3 million from Prop 123. So with the increase in our base level, the decrease in the amount of students, and then factoring in, we are bringing, I believe, and I think, I'm hoping this is where we get to, I think our carryforward is going to go down about $3 million next year, which is a hard hit. I say that because we did a 1% increase to our staff this year. We did two, but one of that was based off of carryforward. But we're just, the district's not overspending, it's just people are spending more of their budgets. We all know when we go to the store, it costs us more in life for everything. It costs the district more for everything. Utilities are more. When we need to do repairs, it's more. And so what we're seeing is that we're just not carrying over as much of that budget as we had in the past, because like I said, it's just, everything just costs more. So we are projecting bringing that down by $3 million for this next year. Those are the big changes. If Prop 123 doesn't go through, it's 1.3 million. So with that, we start off with about a $4.2 million deficit to address. Same numbers, only difference here is that if somehow 123 did come back and we were getting the funding that we have been getting, then we'd have about a $2.8 million deficit that we need to look at. When I say deficit, I mean, we would still have money, we would not be in the hole, but that would impact our carryforward, and you start impacting that carryforward year after year, that will become a problem if we don't start addressing it. I thought it was important to look at, we're educators, our business is schools, our business is teaching, and so this just shows where our people are staffed at. So I took all of our FTE and said, okay, if you're on a school campus, that's a school. If you're at a department level, you're working at a district level. What does that look like? I mean, I think it's appropriate, 85% of our staff are on schools, and this is all funds, not just MNO. This is looking at all funds. About 15% are in the district office. And I think that's important when we start looking at, we need to make cuts. We recognize that. It's just when there's, when the bulk of your staff are at a campus, unfortunately, that's where the cuts tend to hit a little bit more so, just because that's where all of our staff are at. We did, we've been making cuts at a district level. Last year, we cut nine FTE from the district level. This year, and I'll show that in the future slides, we are looking at a total of 12 district level FTE positions for next year. We're still looking. We've got some budget savings we're addressing. We are all day tomorrow sitting in an office, looking at department budgets and going through those requests and needs, and still trying to figure out where can we find more savings? What can we do? Also knowing that we have departments that are saying, I can't make it work with the budget you're giving me. I have to have a little bit more to be able to provide to our schools. So looking at the positions within districts, this looks at all, not just MNO. There's, MNO and capital are our main district funds, but we do have a couple of other funds out there that are used, but we've identified almost five savings out of MNO for about $400,000. Teacher, instructional trainer is actually split between classroom fund, MNO, and Indian gaming, so that's why you see just a little portion of that out of those couple of pots. IDEA is a federal grant that we have. There's two part-time positions there, so savings within that grant. The other biggest one outside of MNO, results-based funding, that is something that's not even funded anymore from the state. We just, we had been receiving it for a number of years. A portion of it was going to a district level account to provide professional development, do some things, and that's just, if you don't add to it, you have to, you start to run those balances down, and so there are quite a few positions out of there that would also be eliminated. So then we start looking at, well, how do we make up a 2.8 to 4.2 million deficit? So thankfully, we are required, employees and the district are required to contribute to Arizona State Retirement Program. There is a very, very small percentage change for next year, which is great, so that'll save the district about $330,000. It'll save employees a small little amount. I don't know if it'll be noticeable, but a small little amount as well, because the percentages are the same for each. We have been working with multiple departments, human resources, special education, educational services, myself, on what can we do to become less reliant on consultants and outside, not consultants, but outside providers to meet our special needs programs, and looking at, what are our ratios and how do they compare with other districts? So we have worked through that and come up with a plan that we're pretty excited about that lowers those ratios, but also then provides a pretty significant stipend to entice teachers to want to become teachers here within the district. So we anticipate a pretty big savings from that. However, private placement has been in the IDEA grant. Private placement is when a student needs to go to another school for certain reasons, and that is becoming exponentially more expensive, and so the grant can no longer fund that entire amount. So whereas we're picking up a little bit of a savings from some ratios, we also know we got to move a big expense into MNO for that. We are, we look at our ratios every year within classrooms. Those are approved ratio numbers, and because we are declining, looking at those anticipated student to adult ratios that are in the classroom, we anticipate about a $1.2 million savings there. Department changes within MNO alone was $400,000, and then the assistant principal ratio change, which was through the IBM process last year, would be a reduction of three for savings of $300,000. With that, we still have a little bit more to do. We're not quite there to cover the full 2.8 million to 4.2 million deficit. We are still working on it. We're still coming up with some cost savings ideas. I think, I think we'll be able to cover the whole 2.8, maybe a little bit more when it's all said and done. I don't know where to find enough savings to cover the full 4.2, to find another 1.3 million in savings. That's the problem for us. The other part that leads into it is, we know it is very important to our staff to be recognized with knowing that cost of living increases every single year and being able to receive some type of increase in their salary. We've heard from our employees, we heard from the different employee groups, medical insurance is a huge problem for us, and we have not changed, we have not increased the contribution from the district to our medical insurance plan in several years, and that's just becoming a problem where all those additional costs are getting pushed on to our employees. That was a big issue this last year. We want to try to address that. So we have this savings right now of about 2.7. We know to do a 1% raise to staff would be 1.5 million. What we are looking at is some districts move district additional assistance or capital money from district additional assistance to MNO. It is an option that we have within our budget, and so what we are looking at is moving, most likely, because I don't know that Prop 123 is going to be addressed before we get into our budget cycle for next year, most likely about $4.2 million. If we were to move those funds, that would allow us to address the fact that 123 has possibly gone away, but it would also allow us to put about $2.5 million towards salary increases, towards medical insurance contributions, and then dealing with some of the fact that we know just things cost more, SROs, facility needs, those things just cost more. If we were to move the 4.2 over and Prop 123 was addressed, we can always, when we do a revision later in the year, we can always move that back from MNO over to capital. Or if something fantastic happened and our enrollment went up and we didn't see the loss in students that we are projecting, then again, if something happened with our revenue and we were able to, we can always move that back over. Once we, whatever we move over for salary and medical increases, so approximately $3 million, that's a continuing expense. So if we do that next year, that is a forever-type thing that we would have to do, because we've now put that into the base of salaries. But it is an option that unfortunately lots of school districts are looking at to be able to deal with declining enrollment and also deal with knowing that to keep teachers, to keep staff, we have to make sure that we're paying them properly. District additional assistance or capital, we have two pots of that. One is from the state. That is estimated to be about $10.9 million for next year. We are carrying over $6.8 that's sitting in unallocated right now. That's why we feel like we can move some of that over to MNO to address that. But that total, if we didn't move anything, would be $17.7 million for capital for next year. We also have a capital override that was approved by our voters in November of '22. That is up to $14.5 million. It's based off of our revenue control limit. We have that for several years. We've got until November 2030 before we have to renew that. It covers furniture fixtures and equipment, library materials, athletics, fine arts, playgrounds and facilities, curriculum, and technology. That doesn't change. That doesn't, we, if we move money, that doesn't change anything within this override. That is voter-approved, that is pamphlet-approved. Those dollars will always be in those pots of money based off of what the amounts that were approved in the pamphlet, so that would not, that would not change. What we, if we were to move it, would come out of the allocation from the state. And with that, might be 14.5. Right now, we're looking at about 14.4. Just depends on where we think we're going to land for next year with an estimated carryforward of $3 million. One of the things we're running forward in some of these carryforwards is, not all the Just depends on where we think we're going to land for next year, um, with an estimated carryforward of 3 million. One of the things we're running forward in some of these carryforwards is, um, not all the projects, like we have things we want to do and we have things that we're buying, but they might not get in in time. We might not be able to complete the project. So when you look at some of those carryforwards, that is part of it, especially with this, is we just know there's things we're doing, there's things we're buying, but if it's not received by June 30th, it moves into the next year. So with that, that would put us at about 17.4 million. Um, this just gives a snapshot of our budget calendar. Some of this is already done. We did meet yesterday for about half the morning, um, or most of the morning with the IBN groups, all groups, to discuss options. Um, I think it was a really productive meeting. We talked about, you know, what is, is 1%? What would it look like to do a flat rate to all employees? What would it look like to do just a stipend to all employees? What would it look to just say to each group, classified certified admin, this is how much your 1%. You figure out how you want to divvy it up. Um, we looked at what could we put towards medical, should we put towards medical? Um, so a lot of ideas came from that that are really good. Um, I have a lot more work to do to cost all those ideas out. Uh, but we come back on February 25th. We'll look at all those options again. And then as an IBN group, um, make their, decide, choose which one, uh, everybody feels is the best option. And then that would be, uh, brought forth when the governing board meets in March for salary schedules. Uh, and then in June, we do the proposed budget and then the adopted budget, um, June Um, so I'll open that up for questions.
Ms. Warner, I hear your microphone. Would you like to ask?
Can you hear me breathing?
Yes, we can hear you breathing. Would you like to make a comment or ask a question?
Thank you so much. Thank you. So, uh, Ms. Crozier, I have a few questions for comment. So Prop 1, 2, 3, is backfilled in the budget? Are you aware of that?
Yes. Um, there's, there's additional funds that districts receive, um, that, that, that's the, the 1.3. So those funds, um, are in after this year.
Yeah. 75 million?
Yeah, this, yeah, there's an actual 75 million dollars. That portion ends this year. So there could be some additional funds. I just don't, we don't know exactly what that's going to look like quite yet from the state.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can Google it. It does say that it's going to be backfilled and it's being, is being planned into the budget. So that would probably be something to confirm, um, just so that we're dealing with accurate numbers. The, the other item that I wanted to, uh, address was the insurance piece. And I met with a CFO from another district this past week. And we specifically to talk about insurance. And it's a little alarming difference in the premiums with the other districts who have some more plans, particularly for the employee option. And so I want to revisit some of the options that you guys were looking at in the past. You did tell me in our last committee meeting that we pay approximately $500,000 a year in administrative costs to Kairos for the insurance. And so I, I do believe, um, you know, I had a conversation with Dr. Menzel at the 3. And, uh, um, at that time I was on the education plan with the President Shield. And I, I shared that with him because it was on his desk and his hesitation with it was that it would, we'd have to hire an administrator. Um, you know, I don't think that the cost has to be unified happily and hired administrator and, um, go to a different type plan. But these, I'm looking at the, the premiums right now for our staff. And, um, it's, it's just not acceptable. You have to get better options for our staff.
Ms. Crozier, would you, uh, excuse me, Ms. Warner? Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead. I was just going to ask Ms. Crozier to summarize the elements of what you heard, just to be sure, uh, when it came across a little fragmented, that you heard each other properly.
Yes, thank you for that. I believe what I heard you say was that, um, looking at some of the other insurance plans, the amount that we're paying for our administrator, administrative cost of about $500,000, um, looking at that and would it be in our best interest to do that ourselves instead of spending the 500,000 on that? Um, and then I believe you also were bringing forth the premiums. I know what we have for premiums are unaffordable at the family level. Um, and that is one of the, unaffordable with it. Um, and just the fact of what ours is costing versus other school districts. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Ms., Mr. Sharkey?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I wanted, I wanted an answer to that.
So I, I can absolutely address that. Um, we are.
More after though.
Oh, go ahead. We are looking at a couple of things. Um, yes, there are administrative costs. Um, we have looked at a couple of different options. Um, we did do an RFP a couple of years ago to look at, would there be a lower cost option? Um, one thing we haven't dived too deep into is hiring our own administrator. Uh, we, we, we don't have the staff in school district. Folks are generally not health insurance, um, experts. And so, um, we, we have kind of looked at it and we can absolutely revisit what would it look like to administer our own program. What I would not want to get into is being the deciding factor on whether or not somebody's claim was approved or, or not approved. One thing we, you sometimes can get when you're in a pool is the benefit of a better, better buy, better buying purchase, uh, power, because there's more people involved in it. We're self-insured, but we're still part of the big Kairos pool. There's other trusts like Valley Schools has the same type of thing. You can be self-insured within it, which means you're covering your claims, but your buying power for the RFP is through, um, multiple entities, which can sometimes, not always, sometimes help with that. Um, our, we went to each IBN group this year and said, we would like two representatives from each group to, um, help sit on a, as insurance committee to look at what we're doing. Um, we have found, well, Kairos, we did a medical pharmacy, uh, RFP this year and identified about $800,000 in savings for us through that. That already is in place. Um, there's a couple of other changes that we anticipate about a 1.2 million dollar savings next year. Our IBN group is working on what are some other cost saving ideas we can do? How can we continue to educate? Um, and then the other thing we'll be doing that we've been tasked with is figure out how to make at least one plan, if not multiples, at least one plan affordable. Um, and so when, because we're self-insured, we can decide what those premiums are. We have a dollar number we have to get to. So it's 20 million, 21 million that we have to get to. We know how many, about how many people are on each plan. And so what we then do is look at it and say, okay, based off of how many people are on each plan and how many are single versus family versus spouse, we can put in the dollar number and, and play with that, just knowing that we've got to, at the bottom number, get to 20, 21 million dollars. So as an IBN committee group, uh, the end of this month, we will be meeting and we will be doing that fun task of.
Prioritize.
How can we make one of these affordable? I think, I think we're getting there. The Self Insurance Trust is going to contribute $2, uh, 2 million more for next year, but we still have a lot of work and we still want to keep looking at all the options that are out there and if there's a better, a better way to go, Kairos or another, another system. Um, so we, we do plan to keep looking at those things.
Okay, thank you. And it might be a good idea to revisit the, you know, the cost per shield. And maybe that's just a possibility, maybe a better avenue for our staff so that they can have good insurance and affordable price. And then I, last one. So as far as with the cuts, uh, again, I'm not a fan of cutting at sites. Um, those are the people that are hands-on with our students every single day. And, you know, I was looking at even district staff and nobody, nobody was letting me know. I, I get it. I don't want to do that either. But you have, um, the district, the assistant superintendents all have their own administrator. Um, I don't know about the directors, if they do. Can they share? When we reduce at the top level so that our, our sites can maintain what they have having? And, uh, I'd like to see if that's a reasonable thing that we can do instead of getting rid of both and reducing staff and particularly the staff with hands-on work.
Absolutely. And that's something we keep, a discussion we keep having. Um, Ms. List, Ms. Mitchell, Dr. Saccos, Ms. Serna, myself, Dr. Cruz, we meet, um, every month. And that's when we keep looking at what, what, what other changes can we make? Cabinet has had that same discussion within departments is if somebody leaves, do we need to fill that position? Um, relooking at how we, how we staff. Um, so absolutely we'll continue looking at all of those things. Cause this is just going to get tighter and tighter.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. So my last thing, so Dr. Menzel, where do you stand in terms of the conversation? And I'd like to hear.
Uh, I'm sorry, I did not hear the question. Can you repeat it, please?
Uh, yes, absolutely. So I said, you, you've heard the dialogue that, that Crozier and I had. I would like more input in what your suggestions are, um, for the things that we have just discussed.
So, uh, we've been reviewing the, but I, I think I understand the question. So in terms of, uh, the types of reductions that we've been making, we as a district are committed to keeping the reductions as far from the classroom as we can. But if you go back in the slideshow, you'll see that 85% of our expenditures are already at the building level. And if you look at what's not at the building level, 100 of the people are bus drivers, transportation or other support that, that, uh, we need in order to be able to get kids to and from school. So the pool of individuals that we can look at reducing, we've already, last year we reduced nine. We've got 12 on the reduction block this year. Even if you shared the secretaries like you just mentioned, you're going to save 50 to $75,000, doesn't get you very close to the 307,000. So yes, we're looking at all of those options. Every time there's a vacancy, we're asking the question whether or not we need to fill it. Uh, and we're looking at what the practical, uh, impact of those decisions are. So, uh, we're not leaving any stone unturned. We are in February, our final budget, uh, gets brought forward first for our first reading in June and then a final at the end of June. So we still have time to put this together. The most important part is to identify whether or not we have made enough progress to address the budget deficit that Shannon, uh, outlined earlier. And I think we have, uh, with a plan towards how we could still provide pay raises for our employees and address the health insurance piece. And we're continuing to aggressively pursue options on the health insurance so that we can reach that level of, and I'll put quotes around it affordability, because in this country, healthcare is broken. So affordability is a relative term, but we have to do better than we were able to do last year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Mr. Sharkey?
Thanks for the info. I know you talked about looking at headcount and getting together in a room and going through kind of line by line. Um, I know it's a different side of the budget, but, um, operational curriculum, technology, vendor services, how is that done? Who kind of looks through that? What's the process on that side?
Sure. Um, so there's two sides of it. Um, when we're talking about, um, equipment, that falls through capital. Um, we, so most of the capital budget ends up going to either facilities or technology, facilities, technology or curriculum. Um, so that really goes through those department leads as to what their plan is with, you know, technology replacement. Dennis always has the same very, pretty much budget to be able to deal with whatever a chiller starts to go down, which we're seeing a lot of that happen. So that side is the equipment part of it. What we'll be doing, and, and we keep tweaking it a little bit each year. So this will be the first year we've done it, the style we're doing it this way. We're trying to tweak it every year to get a little bit better. But this year, what we did is we told all of the departments, you need to prioritize what your budgets are and you need to prioritize what, what you have to have and what would be nice to have. Um, we then will go and, um, sit tomorrow, we'll look at those things. So when people put their budget in, we used to have it built on a piece of paper and they submitted it. And basically the finance team went, yeah, that's more than what you had last year. We can't do that. What we're doing this year is they actually put it in our budget program within Visions, our financial software. And so we'll be sitting tomorrow. They were asked to put in notes, they were asked to prioritize, they were asked to share. And we've told people, hey, we may need to call you and have you come down or, you know, sit off in the phone and explain why you have to have this, this, you know, what you're doing. Um, some things we just, we just know, we know utilities are going to be utilities and, and they're going to go up. But when it comes down to what are those department budgets, we're really trying to look at, what do we have to have? What, you know, what can we, we get away with? The hard part we're finding is really, um, stuff just costs more, everything. And, and I know, I know lots of departments have said, I just need a little bit more. So, um, tomorrow I think will be a very incredibly difficult day, um, going through and trying to make some of those tough decisions. And it'll probably, I'm sure probably be scaled down again, because until we have everything finalized with positions and know exactly where salaries and benefits are going to land, we may have to trim it down even more. But that's, that's our process for this year is to just go with all of, all of the area leads. What did you put in and why do you have to have it?
Thank you.
Other board members? Uh, Ms. Carney?
Thank you, President Lewis. Okay, um, I just have a few questions here. Try and, uh, be brief. On the slide number 14, I believe, where it talks about the assistant principal ratio change. It shows minus three. Now is that 3 FTE or 6.5?
It's a total, um, so because we're going, it's actually six sites. So it would be a total of 3 FTE.
So at six sites, we're looking at going to halftime.
Yes.
Assistant principals.
Yes.
Okay. And, um, you know, we, we've expressed concern with that and, um, I am not, I'm not for that as well. And we've got to figure out how we can do better with that. My question is, and I've stated this before, the MNO override passed, right? The community passed that override. Is there a way to go to the community and survey the taxpayers on where do they want to see that money go to? Do they want to see it? You know, do they want to retain their assistant principals at those schools? I mean, I think it's important that we, we look to the community. We are supposed to be looking in for the input because we are taking, you know, their money and we're very grateful, right? That we passed those overrides where other districts, uh, have not been able to do that. So I think it's important to, um, survey the community on some of these, on some of these cuts. I just don't agree, uh, as well. And I would like to, uh, for us to all look at, I was going through the, uh, the annual comprehensive financial report for 2024. And I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. From 2023 to 2024, we already cut 59 instructional teachers, instructional aides. We, we cut in the one year, 59 positions according to this, uh, report, where in 2023 to 2024, we added 71, uh, in student services. So we need to look at that discrepancy. And we also added in 2023, um, to 2024, we added 44, uh, support and administration positions. So we've already, I've already seen a trend of we're cutting a lot of positions in, uh, you know, our schools and adding to student services and support and administration. So what I would like to see is if you could provide the board that 2025, um, equal numbers to page 125 of our annual comprehensive financial report, that would be very helpful.
Can I ask a clarifying? Is that, um, because I don't have the AFR in front of me, is that the summary page?
That is.
Or is the MNO page?
That's, that's the summary page of these positions on the full-time equivalent district employees.
I, I think some of that could be because of ESER and some grants that we've been awarded that may not just be MNO. Um, I know when we cut a lot of positions last year, it's because ESER was going away. Um, so I mean, I'll absolutely dig into that more. I think, I think that's probably, um, part of it is that we have received quite a few grants, um, for like social workers and, and some other areas. So I suspect that's it, but I will definitely look into the differences within, in those areas.
That'd be, that'd be great. So we can better understand the specific numbers. Uh, my, lastly, on the slide that talks about with the, uh, MNO override, that we are going to maintain classroom sizes. I have been, I have heard from teachers concerned, um, that their classes are actually going to be larger for next year because, um, that some of the elective teachers are being cut, those positions are being cut. And teachers are going to have to now take on more students as well as teaching electives along with their current curriculum. So people, I've heard concerns about this. Um, can, can you let me know if that is fact true, that we are going to be maintaining classroom sizes?
Yes. Um, I will work with, uh, Dr. Cruz and HR on that side of it. We do have the ratios within, so those are the approved ratios that are within our strategic plan. Those are the numbers we've gone with, with our override pamphlet. So we will make sure, um, there could be, you know, if you're a one or two over, I mean, I know that's over. Um, so there is within our language, a little bit of wiggle room. is within our language, a little bit of wiggle room there, but it shouldn't be much over that. So we'll absolutely take a look at that. I know that they look at that when they do staffing, which I've been working on for the last couple of weeks, probably months, actually, working on that. I did want to, you had mentioned about the override, the MNO override. Because it's voter approved, we are bound by what's in that pamphlet to go by that. There is some provision in there to allow to deviate from that after the first year. My fear has always been if we tell the voters, if I stand up here and I stand up at town halls and I tell the voters, and others tell the voters, this is how we're going to spend our money, and we don't follow that strictly, then that could lead to problems down the road. So we have always adhered very closely to what was in that voter pamphlet and how it was in there with the override, with both overrides, the MNO and the, and the capital override. But definitely, I think as we look at what happens throughout the future to get feedback.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, because I guess that's what I was talking about. I agree. Right. And we've been told that. We don't want to deviate from what the public was told when they voted for it. So that's why I say maybe we go back and survey them and explain the situation we're in. And would you agree to changing some of, you know, some of these, these things? And I think that the community would probably be on board with that. But how do we know until we ask?
Yep, we can look into the legality of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Potanski?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for the comprehensive presentation. A couple of questions. So first, picking up actually Ms. Carney's question from open comments, and I think I'm in line, given it's budget related. When parents talk about hearing that a position is being moved to halftime, for example, are they speaking about what they understand our plans on for next year? Or are they speaking about in-year adjustments that we're making relative to the current budget cycle?
I mean,
You don't know?
Yeah, without knowing the exact comment. When we talk about what we're looking at for here, this is always for next school year.
This is for next?
This is for next school year. This is not for this school year. You know, once you get into the school year, you never want to go changing classrooms. You don't want to have to change kids out of classrooms. We've looked at before, you know, we, we do projections and at the beginning of the year, you might have a class that's really, really small and another class that's a little bit heavier. We, it's really difficult once we've started to make those, those changes. Nobody wants their child move from where they're comfortable to another classroom. So generally, when we talk about making changes, it's for next year. Not that some small little things couldn't happen during the year, but that would be well communicated to families.
And that would include something like an assistant principal position being moved to halftime?
Yes.
That typically wouldn't happen?
That would, that would not happen in the middle of the year. That would happen at, later in the year.
A decision we have to make relative to the budget for next year.
Yeah.
And then picking up on Mr. Sharkey's question, am I understanding your answer correctly that we don't say to different departments, look, unfortunately, we have a 2% decline in enrollment? I know it's not literally enrollment because we have all these technical ways of defining it. And therefore, we have, whether it is literally roughly a 2% decline in revenue, unfortunately, we have to cut X percent in our non-people operating expenses. Bring me your budgets that are 2% less, for example.
That's kind of what we did this year. We informed people, hey, we need to make cuts. We're losing enrollment. You need to really think about how you reduce that. One of the areas that makes it really difficult, and I'll just use facilities because that's under me, is even though we're declining in students, we still have the same amount of space. We have the same amount of classrooms that have to be cleaned. We have the same amount of fields that have to be mowed. We have the same. So there's still the same amount of air filters that have to be changed every year. They're same. And so it's hard with some of the departments, even though we don't have as many students, they still have the same amount that they have to do. And so some of them, it's a little bit more difficult to do that. I mean, some of them, their budgets are so tiny, a 2% would be like, maybe 50 bucks, you know, wouldn't be, because they just have a really tiny budget. So we are, I think that's one of the things we are looking at right now and what we'll be looking at tomorrow is, you know, what have, have you made a decrease? You know, like I said, there's some areas that are just out of control, or they're just, they're not in our control to, to reduce them anymore. I can't, I can't control what the SRO costs are from the city. They just are what they are. And if they increase, they increase. So those are all things we're looking at.
But not all of that, right? Some are variable.
Some are absolutely variable, yeah. So that's one of the things we're looking at on all of those is how, is there places we can cut? And I've proved, I've looked at them already. There are some, there are some definite areas that people have cut in and said, nope, you don't need to do that. We can cut that back some. The hard part is when your budget is 86% salaries and budgets?
Yes.
Or salaries and benefits, you can cut some money out of supplies, but it's not going to make a huge, supplies and services, it's not going to make a huge dent. But we all need to chip in, and that's what the conversation has been.
Yeah. Looking back, thank you. So looking back, if you go up to the average jelly membership trend data?
Mm-hmm.
So that's slide four.
Yeah.
It is pretty remarkable. The average percent decline is 2%. You have the big drop for COVID and you have the big jump back, but the, the CAGR or the annual average percent change is 2%. And then over the last few years, it's been 2%. So it makes sense to forecast it at 2%. To state the obvious, everything we do to make this year's budget work or next year's budget work, we're going to be doing it again 12 months from now. We are in a cycle due in part to demographic changes and do in part to capture rate and our ability to convince as many families in the district. And I don't think we want to steal from surrounding districts, but it'd be nice, surrounding districts, you're welcome to, to choose Scottsdale schools. Everything that we do, we cut five positions this year. We're going to have to find five positions next year.
Yeah.
These are more systemic, which is part of why I push on that question around fundamentally rethinking our expense structure and not only solving for the change in revenues that we have this upcoming year, because there's a broader headwind that we're facing.
Well, and that's a great point. In all reality, I mean, we talk about moving, you know, a few million dollars from capital this year. We will forever have to do that. Do we have the capital dollars to do that the following year and to add to that? Because if we don't change the course we're on, how do we get raises, how do we, you know, afford raises in the future? So those are all, I know as a group, we're working on next year, I'm already looking at five years. What are we going to do for the next couple of years? Because the trend isn't changing.
Yeah, there is, I think there's an inflection point, level of change in addition to kind of our annual
Yes.
efforts to try to mitigate the changes as much as possible. And then my final question, as I joked, there's like five different ways to define the concept of an enrollment with these different acronyms.
Yeah.
And I asked you last, I don't know if it was last month, but last meeting, is there a way to quantify the lost revenue associated with the decline of, you know, 300, if it turns out to be the case, 390 or so? And so is the answer the 2.9 million?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Even though that's a different, that's SWC versus roughly speaking, change in enrollment is going to cost us 2.9 million in revenue.
Yeah, because you have that weighted count as well as the override. So what I literally did is said, if we stayed just flat and kept that number the same based off of what we know, you know, for a base amount and revenue, or, and the override and all those things, what, what's the difference? And it's $2.9 million.
Yeah. Sorry, I did have one last question. I apologize. So the exercise that you're involved in is to identify as many offsetting expense adjustments and ultimately come back to us with a view of here's, here's one way, our recommended way, presumably, that if the world turns out to be what we think it is from enrollment perspective, that we get there on the expense side. How in our process, and maybe this is a Dr. Menzel question, how in this process, picking up on Ms. Carney's comment, I think, does the board, where in the process does the board reflect our priorities and values? So I would hate for so much work to be done, and then we say, well, no, $300,000 from, just picking that example, 300,000 from assistant principals is just something we're not comfortable with. And then all of a sudden, we're under the gun in order to get to an ultimate budget. So can you, just as the newbie going through the budgeting cycle?
I appreciate the question.
Thank you.
I would say first, the board in, in part, set the direction for us when they approved the SAA agreement a year ago that had the ratios in it for principal, assistant principal. I'll give you an example. So Cherokee Elementary has over 700, maybe 750 students. They have a principal and an assistant principal. We have one of our K-8 schools that has fewer than 300 students K-8. They have a principal and an assistant principal. And so in having the conversation about what level of staffing is required in order to be able to meet the needs of a building, the needs in a building with 750 students arguably are a little different than the needs in a building with fewer than 300. And the question is, what can we support? What's an equitable distribution of resources? It took almost two years of bargaining through IBN to get to the ratios that were approved by the board last year. So the marching orders for administration were governing board approved. So the part of the question that, that I would say, when does the board get to weigh in, in part, it's when you approve those IBN agreements, because that sets the path for the future. Now, we have three new board members who were not a part of approving that IBN agreement, but that was what was approved last year. And that's been how we've been operating. There's been no change in that. And under Arizona law, the, the board can act unilaterally, but it'd be in violation of Board Policy HA, which says that we're going to engage in a bargaining process, interest-based negotiation with our associations to get to that point. So that's part of it. The, the other part, I was just even looking at the, the numbers. Since I got here in 2020, at that point, 2.4 million of our budget was spent on security. This year, 6.1 million is being spent on security. So we've increased our security expenditures in terms of personnel by 3.68 million over that period of time. So the, the issue is that the board always can talk about the priorities, but there are trade-offs. If we don't close a building, if we don't make some of those other decisions, you can eliminate transportation, but that has another effect as well. We try to balance that. We do as much as we can through attrition so that we're, we're trying to avoid a direct negative impact on our employees who we value. We work hard and have been able to provide pay increases every year since I've been here, which has not always been the case during difficult economic times in the, in the district. But we've been able to do that so far. And so the board always has the opportunity through review of the budget to identify what the non-negotiables are. But whenever you draw a non-negotiable here, that means there's going to be some give somewhere else. And as you've seen, there's not a lot of fluff in those areas and the things that Shannon mentioned that are outside of our control. We know that there are inflationary pressures. We've already received it from vendors saying that with the new tariffs, we're expecting an increase in some of the supplies that we're procuring. If you think computer technology that we get, they're going to be, there will be a ripple effect. The cost of gas has gone up again. The, the cost of food has gone up, in some cases, pretty significantly. So it's balancing all of those things. I do believe that as, as this governing board has an opportunity to work together, there's an, there's a chance to identify what the priorities are, to set some targets or markers along the way. We've had to start this year, long before we got to this point, just in the preparation phase. And it's really been guided by the IBN agreements that the board approved back in June.
So as a follow-up there, looking at the calendar, the next thing on the board is June 10th, proposed budget to board, and then two weeks later, adopting. Is that?
So the March 4th meeting is important because that is, there was a change in state law where we can't issue contracts before March 15. Historically, districts kept moving up the timeline when they were issuing contracts because we all want to attract and retain talent. People, when they sign a contract, are signaling that they're going to stay here. That helps us know what positions are filled and where we might need to look for additional talent. So that meeting on March 4th is important. We anticipate.
Well, we haven't, we can go two ways. We, once we know what the IBN recommendation will be for salaries and, and medical, that would be for that March 4th. I mean, we can, I don't have it on there. We can always come back with another action item to say this is, you know, we've gone multiple ways.
So, so the point is that there will be more budget discussion on March 4th. If we need to add another budget discussion for the April 1st meeting, or if you wanted, I mean, there's, there's the potential to have more discussions to help identify where we are in the process. The, the reason March 4th is important is those contracts go out for our certified staff the week of spring break, the earliest that we can do it, March 15-ish. And, and then they have two weeks to, to turn those back in. And so that's a really important date in the budget cycle. After that, there's still a lot of things that can, can move. So new information, the legislature decides to move forward on X, Y, or Z. If we get any positive variance at all, we can incorporate those. We have until the end of June to adopt our budget there. The state over the last three years hasn't adopted the state budget until the end of June. So we've had to adopt a budget without knowing with certainty what the state's budget's going to be.
Thank you. Yeah, I wish I hadn't used the assistant principal example. I should have used the social media example. Like if I was against, if I was for social media and really wanted to pound the table to keep that social media position, when in the process, we'd have the opportunity, not asking you to solve an impossible equation where everything is, you know, candy canes and lollipops, and we never have to make difficult decisions. But to Mike's point, or Mr. Sharkey's point, that calendar, it wasn't clear to me when there's an opportunity that isn't, well, gosh, we have to approve it now because the budget's about to, you know, fiscal year's about to start and so on, that there is a space for that discussion.
In an ideal cycle, that conversation would happen with the board probably August and September before we start interest-based negotiation. So when you think about the IBN process, the board has interest, as do our employees. And so getting clear on what those are to inform that process on the front end then helps us as we move through the rest of this calendar here. Because we have a board starting in January, makes it more difficult. This will be the same board, barring any unforeseen changes, when we get to next fall. So that would be an ideal time to kind of set the parameters and say, okay, here are the things that we're seeing. These are the interests that we have. That helps inform the work we do at the, at the bargaining table so that recommendations you see should then reflect those interests.
Can I, I will add on there. So on March 4th, you know, if IBN says we want to do, we want to increase, I'm just going to make, I'm just saying 1%, and we want to put some money onto medical. If, if that happens and the board approves that, then that, I take that as my cue that I have, that we're moving 3, $4 million from DAW to MNO, because that's the only way to, to cover that. So some of it is based off of decisions that are made as we, as we move forward as to, I take that as my cue, move that DAW money over, because that's what has to happen to make those shoulder that way.
District additional assistance.
Yeah, district additional assistance.
Excellent discussion. Ms. Warner, just wanted to circle back any, anything?
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Rich discussion. Thank you so much. We're now at consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E, G, and I through M. That means we've pulled F and H. So I need a second to the motion to pass the consent agenda as described.
Second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Dr. Potanski?
I did want to make one quick comment, but what I'll do is just abstain from the vote. If I can make, can I make the comment?
Yeah.
So I just want to acknowledge that I work in the education technology industry. And as such, I want to be extra careful to never intentionally or unintentionally vote on something that in any way could relate back to any companies. Well, I'm involved in one.
In the appearance of, you know?
Either a real conflict and even a perceived conflict.
Okay.
So I did want to flag on the Education Technology Consortium, just because it has the words "education technology." I did just want to ask and clarify, is that approving any specific technology purchases? Or is it just approving our ability to make future approved purchases through a consortium that presumably gets us better rates or what other advantages there are?
So I did some checking with our team, and, and this cooperative hasn't purchased any of the, the organizations that you've been connected with. There are software programs that might help connect with synergy, but they're not something that we would purchase or support. So somebody else in the consortium So somebody else in the consortium might secure that, but SUSD does not anticipate that. It's not a part of what's in our plan. That's according to Dr. Bachner, who oversees any purchase that would be related to Synergy.
Motion passes as a 4-0, and an abstain. 4-0-1. Okay. Thank you.
But to be clear, I don't work for Synergy.
Appreciate the ultra-cautionary transparency.
It's just, it's just the...
Checking the right conflict.
They were connections with. So I've got Intel Spark, Canvas Mastery, Parchment. Those have been maybe used by someone else. They haven't been purchased yet, but could connect with Synergy.
I just wanted to pick up on your comment on Synergy. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to first, 8F. Mr. Sharkey, you pulled. You want to comment? Then we'll make a motion when you're ready.
Thanks. Yeah, this is just informational and apologies for not handling it beforehand. But the first lineup on there, Educational Services LLC for Temple Point Recruiting, looks like it's a big miss from an approved amount of 1.5 and asking for 2.2. Just asking for some color on that.
Vice President Sharkey, so...
Your mic's not on.
Is it on?
I need to follow.
Says on.
Says on.
Can't hear it.
You know what? I can solve that. Okay. So Educational Services or ESI is the company we use when employees retire from the district and then want to come back and work through ESI in that same role. We don't always know because people can retire throughout the whole year. So when we did this originally, we go off of what did last year look like? It was 1.5 million. We've had, people can retire, we're changing this, but people can retire throughout the whole year, which can make a change in how much we're paying to ESI because maybe in June we had 10 people and then as the year progresses, we're up to 15 or so people. And so that's why it can really fluctuate that. There's also stipends that they can receive through ESI, or they could do extra work through ESI tutoring other programs. And so we, we've just had more people going on that program. They stay on it for a year and then they come back, they can come back to the district as a return to work. So the difference is really in, we've just had an influx of people going on ESI this year above what we had anticipated back. We brought this to the board back in May. And so when we do this again for next year, we'll definitely project at a higher level because I'd rather, we don't want to project too high and then that causes question as to why are you increasing it so much each year? But this one can fluctuate quite a bit. So we'll add a little bit more to it next year when we do our projection for next year, just anticipating that it could, it could go up. But it's just because of retirees going on that program and supplementals.
And, you know, I don't know the situation here with other companies I've been involved with. There's a, hey, I'm going to retire, but then come back as a consultant. I'm actually doing better if I do that than if I stayed. Is there any sort of gamesmanship with this? I just don't know the context of why someone does that.
No. So you, so with state retirement, you have to be, you can retire, but you have to be out of the system for a year before you can work for a school district again. So going to one of these companies means that you can retire from the district. So say you've got 30 years and that's a, that's a good point for you. There's a multiplier at 30 years. And you maybe only want to work another couple of years. You could go on ESI retire, and if you go on that program, you come back, but you come back at a reduced rate. So the benefit for the person is that they're receiving state retirement and, you know, and pension, pension and paycheck from the district. But when they come back, we bring them back at a lower rate than their...
85%?
Yeah. It's, I think it's 80%?
90?
90%. So there is a reduction.
As a return to work.
Yeah, for...
So the additional expenditure in this, are we making that up in salary savings because we are no longer paying them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Warner, did you have some additional questions on this particular topic?
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Would you make a motion?
Sure. I'd make a motion to pass item 8F as it is stated.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes 5-0. Consent agenda items, that has been pulled for H, it's personnel action items. And Ms. Warner?
Thank you. So off the personnel for, I'm from Holly Reynolds. So everything else on that personnel report is fine. Well, once again, we have a teacher shortage and people are leaving our district and particularly around special ed. And I had asked for an investigation into the practice of forcing, intimidating, interrogating our staff into resigning when there's been a minor issue, maybe a disagreement in ideology or things like that. And it is my understanding that that's what happened to Ms. Reynolds. So I'm not going to support her resignation because I know that that's not what she wanted. And the handling of this by HR is abhorrent. And I will re-request my investigation into HR. I had hoped that these practices would go away, but clearly they're not. So you feel free to make the motion to approve her resignation, but I will be not approving it. This is abhorrent. And I think that we need to take better care of our teachers. And as a matter of fact, I'd like to request an executive session, bringing Ms. Reynolds in so that the board can have a clear understanding of what happened, what happened in that room, and how she was forced to resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from board members on item H, 8H? Ms. Carney, are you trying to chime in? No?
That motion needs to be...
Okay. So, well, first, a motion as present. I'll make a motion that the item 8H be approved as presented. So we'll need a second. Yes.
So you'll want to approve the entire personnel report except Ms. Reynolds, and then we'll vote on her separate.
There'll be two votes off the personnel report.
She made the motion.
Okay, I'll do it. Here, I'll do it. Here we go. I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll motion the personnel report, the exception of Holly Reynolds.
Minus one individual. And we need a second on that motion.
Second.
All right. And any, any more discussion? All right. So we'll, we'll do a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes as presented. So now, I'm concerned about a name of an individual.
We know the name, but you can just take it as...
That's the only part that passed.
Yeah. And Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
I did have her permission. I did have her permission to use her name.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Let me just get some clarity first. There's no further motion.
No, we need to approve her, you guys still need to approve her resignation, and I'm going to decline.
Okay, so I see what you're saying.
Except for the resignation.
And now, okay, now there's, I got you. Thank you. Okay, and I'm sorry. Go, Mr., Dr. Potanski?
What does it mean to not approve a resignation? Like if they resign, I'm trying to understand what we're doing here.
Because we're accepting the resignation.
If we don't accept the resignation?
At some point, you will.
You cannot force someone. What does it mean in practice to not accept someone's resignation?
Mr. Buzan?
It sounds odd, but at some point, the board will need to make the official action of accepting the resignation. So I would just caution you at this stage, because the agenda item is so sparse on this issue, not to go through, you know, extensive discussion on this issue because it's not agendized for that. So I think you could either move to accept the resignation, move to table, which would then cause us to put an agenda item on it for another resignation at another time, or whatever occurs.
And just as a general question, if we don't approve someone's resignation, they're not allowed to resign? Clearly, that's not the case.
They will resign. I just don't think, it's kind of like when people separate, but the court hasn't accepted the order for their dissolution. It may not be legally binding, but they are no longer together. So I think that the person...
That wasn't the most helpful analogy.
I think the person can resign, but at some point, the board will need to take action to accept the resignation.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Warner.
So I will stand up for our teacher any day, and I understand that this vote is going to be approved, and I would like to be on record that it is not, she was forced to resign.
Okay.
Thank you.
Another comment, Ms. Carney?
I just have a question on this. If we were to, if we were to have an executive session to learn more about this, would that need, would there need to be a motion for that? Or how will we go about...
I'm going to look to Mr. Buzan.
Well, I don't think, under the agenda that we have today, we could go into executive session for legal advice now. I don't think this has been noticed for executive session. We definitely can't go on the personnel matter today, but we could have an agenda item at a different board meeting.
Okay. So we can go on our future agenda item. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sharkey?
Yeah, I'll just ask from a precedent standpoint. I mean, I have zero information here. And so, you know, whether to vote or abstain, I have no information to go off of. So precedent-wise, I'm not sure if this is normally brought up. Mr. Buzan, any guidance you get from precedent in this?
It's a little unique, but, you know, it's really just a matter of, I wouldn't say it's a matter of first impression. It's, I mean, I've kind of explained what your options are. You can table. You don't have a lot of information, or you can accept, you know, on that same information. And so precedent-wise, I think precedent's not that relevant. It is what it is.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion to accept the resignation as presented? Hearing none, we'll table it and look to a future agenda item. Is that correct, Mr. Buzan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table Holly...
Acceptance of the resignation.
Acceptance of her resignation until the board can have an executive session.
Second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hasn't been seconded.
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay. Aye.
Ms. Warner, aye? Karen, can you hear me?
I said aye.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm just waiting on one more.
I'm a nay.
A nay?
Yes.
Okay. So we, the motion passes 4-1 to table the acceptance of a resignation, the designated resignation. Thank you. All right.
And just for a point of clarification, Ms. Lewis, included in that motion was, it was tabled until we can have an executive session with the individual. Thank you.
We'll get, yeah, legal advice on the executive session. Thank you. All right. Let's take a look now at action items under number 9A, approve employee contract language and listed benefits for school year 25-26. Is Ms. McLennan coming?
We do not have a presentation, but Ms. McLennan is here. She assisted with the updating of the language of all of the contract templates that you have in the board packet and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
What questions might the board have at this point?
I was looking through the red lines, and can you just summarize, what problem are these edits solving?
Madam President, Vice President Sharkey, the contracts were updated to reflect changes in the law or to make the contract documents more uniform. So one of the primary changes that was made was there was a law that was passed that's now 15509 that requires any applicants to the district to indicate whether they've been accused of certain crimes. So that was added. And that was the primary item added. Other than that, dates were changed and the idea was to make them more uniform.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. 5-0. Thank you, Ms. McLennan, for being here for this entire evening for that question. All right. We are now on 9B. Authorization of expenditure, 68th Street and Oak, formerly Tonalea Elementary Campus. It's a facilities improvement. We are looking for authorization of an expenditure. Do we want Dennis to present, or we're just waiting for...
He's going to point to some things. It's not a full presentation.
Okay.
Just point to where it has drawn the information.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Lewis, members of the board, Dr. Menzel. I am thrilled to be here. Unfortunately, the audience that's here all knows about this project. So I'm going to go through it very quickly and leave the questions to you. I first want to point out one thing, and that is the transparency that we show on our website. Steve Paluch, last week, I mentioned to him that the website needed a tweak. He went like website ninja on me, made a bunch of changes, made it so much better right away. And so I wanted to kind of walk you through this just a little bit, and I'll do it quickly. First, I want to point out that the 68th Street project, I was realizing as I was washing my hands in the bathroom, that we've been working on this project since 2020. That's half of my career here in Scottsdale. So if you guys say no to this, I might have to run off a bridge.
That's what we're talking about. Okay.
Oh, no.
I motion to approve.
Second, second, second.
Oh, no. I just gave Steven all these kudos and the website's messed up. Oh, there she is.
How the ninja works.
There she is. So one place, all the information that you need for this project, and the years of effort that we've put into this. And it's seen a number of different partners, a number of different renditions. The community's been involved. It's really been one of those hard-earned projects. Usually, I can get it done in six months and off we go. We build something. But this one in particular has been a little bit of a challenge. The 68th Street was once Tonalea Elementary School, and that community, like many of our Scottsdale communities, absolutely loved their school. Loved their school, still love their school, even though it's a field and a parking lot. So our proposal is to turn that into a multipurpose facility for sports. One of the things that we learned through a community meeting back in March was that sand beach volleyball was the up-and-coming sport. We've got it at several of our high schools, not all of them, and they all farm out to a different location to be able to play beach volleyball. So this was an opportunity to take this facility and do something real positive for our high schools to take care of that. Now, a facility like this needs care, and so we need to generate revenue. So we will have the volleyball courts for our high school teams, but then we'll rent them out for club teams. We will have plenty of turf for soccer, flag football, any of the turf sports that are out there, whether it's club sports, some of our high school training facilities, anything like that, we'll be able to use for this facility. This is a flood-irrigated facility, and so it's a little bit more temperamental. You can't use it in the same way that you use a sprinkled field. And so there'll be a little bit less use, which will make the community happy. They'll have that park-like setting in their neighborhood. They'll be able to see and use that facility. But there'll still be plenty of rentals to help us generate revenue to offset the cost of this facility. So the design proposal, and for anyone that's watching, the governing board had direction to the website and to be able to see this. Did you guys get a chance to take a peek at this? So the facility as it stands right now, with the exception of the building... So the facility as it stands right now, with the exception of the building, has been re-roofed and repainted to clean that up and make it watertight. And then you can see that it's just a lot of grass in this area over here where the old media center used to be. The proposed location or the proposed improvements for eight volleyball courts, we're going to cut down the existing basketball courts into a much smaller piece of concrete. We're going to have an area here where the community can enjoy a park-like setting, a little exercise route, places for their grandkids to play, and a little bit of grass, hopefully not for their dogs to run. We've got the ability to have a full-size soccer field, and on the other two fields, depending on what we're doing, we've considered opportunities for football field goal posts, for kicking camps, or things like that. So we're really hoping that what we can target are more specialty stuff. We've only got 66 parking spaces, and one of the bigger concerns for the community was that everyone's not parking all over their community. So we're going to target smaller groups and try and keep that parking to a minimum on that property. So we've got some photos, but I'm going to slip back to the movie. It's a Minute 47. Hopefully you don't mind taking a look at that. The architects, Kristin Taylor Foley's here from DLR, and they worked real hard on this, listening to me opine about how perfect I want this project to be for that community. Oops, sorry, clicked on the wrong thing. I don't know what this green thing is popping up. That's me doing the push-ups there. Look pretty good, huh? So as you can see, when you come in the site, straight to the volleyball courts, that area right now has some playground equipment. Our fixed assets folks have been able to auction off some stuff and actually made a pretty good chunk of change. Those folks are demoing those shade structures out themselves at their own cost, so the demolition has cost us nothing, which is usually something that goes to the general contractor and can be pretty expensive. Lot of turf area, and then we go back to the exercise park-type setting. We have to be careful about calling it a park. We're not a, we're not a city. We are not park owners. We don't have an obligation to create a park, but that community has been extremely patient as we go through this process, and so we wanted to do a little bit something that the community can enjoy and our athletes can enjoy as well. So my ask is for the authorization of expenditure with Willmang, and I can read it exactly, is to recommend the governing board authorize the expenditure of 1.18124707 with Willmang Construction for the facility improvements at 68th Street and Oak, formerly Tonalea. Additionally, the administration would recommend a $50,000 owner contingency to be used as needed for minor changes to the scope and unforeseen conditions during the course of construction with a total anticipated expenditure of 123124707. These are plant funds. These are funds that with Shannon's grim report do not affect that. These are dollars that are set aside based on land leases, purchases, things like that, and they have a very restricted use in how we can spend them. So this was the perfect opportunity, and I would love for a yea across the board. Any questions?
I'll open it up for the board. Dr. Potenski?
No, she's waiting.
Okay.
Okay. Can you see me?
I can see you, yes.
Okay, you can see me, okay. All right, thank you.
Matches your dress.
Yeah. Well, I too, I've been along paying attention to this from the beginning with you, and so, and going to your town meetings, and so I appreciate all the work and efforts you've been, you've put into this. I just have two easy questions, I think. Did you get any negative feedback from the community members who have been very involved? Did you get any feedback on this project?
We got a lot of feedback, and every time we asked for more, we got more negative. It stopped when the previous partners bailed out. And so once that was done and the district was going to take on the burden of financing it and doing it our way, the negativity went away.
Okay, so you would say, as far as concerns, you talked about the parking concerns. Were there any other major concerns that the community had with this project as is?
So the things that we've gotten are more like suggestions. Can we get more trees down 68th Street? Can you do this? Can you do that?
Okay.
And all of those we looked at, and when you look at this, the update from the previous, previous, previous meeting, the one that the board approved the $99,000 spend, we had a list of all the different things that we had accounted for based on the input, and then we incorporated them all. And then after we were done with that design, then we went back to the community and had another meeting and asked basically, how did we do? And it was an overwhelming, great job.
Okay, great. And then lastly, and I apologize if I missed this in your recent presentation here, but I thought at one point you had talked about this being locked. Is this property going to be locked, or will the community have full-time access to this?
So the community will have access. The picture that's up there right now, that's basically a strip of land from the parking lot to about 40 feet from that tree into the fence line. So they'll have about 40 feet, 300 feet long of grass, exercise equipment, walking path that they'll have full access to. We will likely, like all of our schools, lock down the playground equipment itself because that's always just a risk that we carry every time we leave that open. But generally speaking, and all of this equipment that we'll be buying is extra sturdy, it's meant for the outdoors, it's meant for the wear and tear of public use.
Okay, so someone from facilities will be monitoring that and locking it and opening it for?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sharkey?
Question on costs. I understand the cost we're allocating here is coming from one bucket. Upkeep, maintenance, where does that hit from year to year? So, security, other?
We do, we do the maintenance on it now. It's still getting its grass cut. It's been getting its grass cut since we tore the buildings down. So the increased cost is going to be very, very minimal. The sand is going to be the big one, right? Keeping the cats out of the sand. But otherwise, we anticipate the cost to be not a whole lot more than what we're spending already.
In the, in the November presentation, there was a bullet point that lifecycle costs should be evaluated. So I understand it's minimal, but are you talking like $100 incremental per year?
Actually, the real dollars are going to be in the building, and we're not doing anything with the building right now. As I mentioned in the board agenda, we don't have the funds to do that. We're working with some community partners to do that, but that's where the cost will be, once you get the air conditioning going, the lighting going, all of that. But my expectation is, and what I conveyed to the community back in March, was that we wanted to have, generate enough revenue to make this a zero-cost property. So if we can generate enough revenue to soccer teams and football programs and whatever else we rent to, to pay for any costs for the project.
But just order of magnitude, if it costs, about what does it cost us now? And are we talking $100, $1,000 a year? Like, any idea, just?
I, when I ran the numbers before, and I'd need to run them again now that it's almost three years later, we're talking about $50,000 to $75,000 a year.
Okay. And that's what you're planning to be offset by fees?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
You know what they say, if you build it, they will come? And everybody that knows about this is already ready to start playing on it.
Ms. Warner, just want to check in. Any questions or comments?
Great presentation, thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
You're welcome.
Dr. Potenski?
Do you ask for a motion?
I am.
I motion that we approve.
Second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, 5-0 approval.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the selection of a facilitator for the board retreat. Now, I know we talked about this last meeting, and we separated the need to agree on a date, and I think the right policy was suggested, but we did agree that we wanted to move forward on maybe a more of a variety of possible facilitators, and names were suggested. So I think we asked administration to prepare a number of facilitators for us to consider, so thank you for putting that in our packet, and I'll ask the board at this time for discussion before any motion is made. All right, Mrs. Carney.
Thank you, President Lewis. I just would like to, I guess, give some past data to educate us on our decision for tonight, but at a board retreat, October 18th of 2021, I know we paid the facilitator, Connie Cam, $1,500 to facilitate that board retreat, which seems to be a similar alignment to what we might be looking to do. And then last year, our board retreat was a cost of $1,200. So I see on our agenda, we have the different pricing from the different facilitators. My question is, what was on the proposal that we gave to these facilitators? What was presented to them for them to give us these figures?
So essentially, we said that we have three to three and a half hour board retreat, an initial retreat for a new governing board to get to know each other, to identify norms, kind of just a broad brush approach. Each of the individuals knows that the governing board wanted to have input into the creation of the agenda, so it wasn't a formal proposal. It was simply, are you willing to do it? Can you share your biographical information? And what would you charge? So it was very basic in that regard.
Dr. Potenski?
So I'm happy to open up. I should say first, I don't know any of these individuals. I don't believe I've met them, so I only know them by the biography. I want to thank Dr. Menzel and Dr. Lewis for putting forward for, by resume, very qualified options for us. I'm not inclined to move forward with Ms. James, just based on my colleague's concerns at the last meeting about working with someone from ASBA. I really would like us to try to find a facilitator that we all feel like, you know, we were excited to work with. In the abstract, I would put the greatest premium on someone who has some context or connection to the Scottsdale community and the Scottsdale schools, and also the least expensive option, since they're all the most qualified. And so when I put those two together, the name that jumps out to me is Ms. Beckford. She was on the SUSD Board for eight years, and she also has a very impressive education pedigree and seems to have a background, commitment through the Coronado Foundation and a background also in facilitation, which I think matters. But to be clear, I could work with any of these and be excited.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, Ms. Warner.
Thank you. So I did review the bios, I also checked out the LinkedIn's, and the, you have one impressive bio of somebody who's achieved what we would love to achieve, and that is Mr. Jenkins. Now, I have never met the man, I don't know him, and I think that this retreat is about supporting us in, you know, getting together and being able to create something good and something big for Scottsdale Unified. We're seeing a, you know, a decline in enrollment, right, in efficiency rates, all of these things. So I would, I would favor Mr. Jenkins because he's already proven success in an area where we are trying to be successful. And we've had a decline for the last four years in all the areas, and so I think that him bringing his wisdom, his knowledge, and having worked with obviously numerous boards, that that would be highly valuable. I'm not concerned about the $2,000. You know, just, you know, two meetings ago, you know, we were voting on spending $15,000 to travel to Georgia, so I think that $2,000 is pretty menial for this, and I'll forego any conference for the remainder of the year to cover that cost, but I think we want to get high dollar, like, we want to get high value from somebody who's achieved the success that we're trying to receive, and so that is my choice.
Okay. Mr. Sharkey?
I'll reiterate this, what Dr. Potenski said. I think the context for Scottsdale is important to me. This is about our community and how we work together to benefit our community, so that's a positive for me.
Meaning your interest is in Cara Beckbar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carney?
Thank you. When I was reviewing all these, I was just feeling like you could facilitate this just as well as, you know, the, these names on here that were just board members. I would rather see you lead us and facilitate what you have a lot of experience doing for no charge than bringing in-
Well, hang on on the no charge. I'm just messing with you, go ahead.
So I, that was my thinking when I was looking at this. Why would we bring in, you know, someone who's just been a board member? And when we have someone that has experience on the board that could, I feel, facilitate this. But I also am with Board Member Warner, where I would like to see a neutral, you know, presence in Dr. Jenkins, and I know he has done work for the district as far as some professional development things. So I as well would like to see us go with him, but I do have a question on the price. If we were to use him, could we offer him a different price, or is that not something we do? We would just accept this price?
So, so it's always an option to come back with a counteroffer. This is not a formal RFP, it's below the threshold, and so if the board wanted to say, hey, we're only comfortable with 1,500, match what we did the last time, you could do that. I think in this environment, while you can argue every dollar matters, it's a small amount in the scheme of things. What's really important is that the governing board comes together and has this conversation as soon as we can, and I think either Ms. Beckbar or Dr. Jenkins would do a fine job in facilitating it. I would argue that you need the facilitator. I believe Dr. Lewis would do a fine job too, but it's hard to be a participant and a facilitator, so I think we really do need that neutral party to engage in that part of the process.
Go ahead, Ms. Carney.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to approve Lee Jenkins to be our facilitator for upcoming board retreat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and do we want to entertain that motion? And any other discussion on Mr. Jenkins?
Just on a discussion point, I don't know if this is appropriate to ask, but is that your only option? I just want to make sure, I want something that we're all in agreement with, and so I don't know if it's, that is it, or if you're open to other, you know, Dr. Potenski said he's open to different options. I just want to make sure there's something that we're all on the same page with. So if it's fair to ask, can I ask are other options on the table for you, or are they non-starters? Ms. Carney or Ms. Warner?
Ms. Carney?
So, do you want to take it?
No, go ahead.
Or remember, okay. So I wasn't going to go here, but I will. So we do have a motion and a second on the table, so we do have to vote on that. But I will tell you that Ms. Beckbar reached out to both myself and Board Member Carney when we were first on the board, as she does with most people, and we did meet with her. She was rude, condescending, and partisan. So I have no interest in sitting in a room with her for her to lead our professional development.
Thank you, I really appreciate you sharing, because that's important to me in the decision. So thank you very much, Ms. Warner.
Dr. Potenski?
I don't remember, I don't think we actually operate under Robert Roosevelt. I don't remember. I don't think we actually operate under Robert Roosevelt of order. But if we did, would it be a friendly modification to approve it at last year's, last retreat's budget and see if we can sort of try to strike the balance? I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. At the same time, last board meeting, we specifically made a point of saying we, as a board, should try not to be spending dollars where we don't need to, especially in this environment, even if it is a rounding error. So I'd like to try to push a little bit to...
Mr. Patensky, if you don't mind?
Go ahead, Ms. Warner.
We do vote on a motion and a second, but the person who made the motion can make an amendment. And I do believe we are voting on the individual, not the price. So I think that all of us probably agree that a counter of $1,500 is fair, but we're voting on the individual.
I would like to make an amendment, because it's a hard negotiating position for the board to approve it in a public meeting that the person with whom we're negotiating, you know, is aware. So I'd rather, you know, send a very clear message that we'd like to work with this individual, and we would also like to stay par to the budget that we used last time for something like this.
Prove to a maximum of $2,000?
I think that's the same difference. So, no, my, I don't know, what am I doing?
You're doing an amendment, if that's all right with Ms. Warner?
Ms. Carney would make the amendment.
I'm sorry. I keep doing this to you, don't I?
I mean, I'm happy to amend the motion to approve Lee Jenkins at our prior rate of $1,500.
Perfect.
Perfect.
We need a second to the amendment?
Second.
All right. May I call the motion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you for that. We are now at the point where I think I'm calling executive, so let me just pause and make sure I'm right. Okay. So I move that... Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, and it's... Well, one of the things we got in through consent agenda, but we didn't get to celebrate clap and hurrah, is to give acknowledgement to Dr. Bono for being selected as the new Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education. I didn't see you there, and you were just so low key. So we're really proud of you, and congratulations. We look forward to the expertise you bring in, the history of the district, and all of your other outstanding knowledge in curriculum and instruction. Thank you. All right. With that, I move that we adjourn into executive session. I need a second, right? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, I am calling the regular meeting back to order at 9:51. Everyone is present except for Ms. Carney. Is that fair to say or should we re-?
No, I'm right here.
Sorry, Ms. Warner, I do this all the time, don't I? I'm working on it. Except for Ms. Warner. Is that a fair way to put it? Okay. Sorry about that. I move that we close the account with Ballard and Spark for the remainder of the amount due effective February 12th. I need a second. Do you want a second?
Want to say not pursuing the case or is that implied?
Then there's no further action.
We need approval of expenditures.
I just...
You said, I thought you said close the account.
Close the account in the amount due. Do you want me to say in...
That's fine.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. We have governing board reports. Ms. Sharkey?
I just want to share, I was at the Chinese New Year celebration, the Prado del Sol, and the first Lego League competition where four of our schools competed in it. And just really great to be part of that community and see everyone. So just really enjoying this as I start getting going with these things.
Nice.
Just wanted to share, I was delighted to see Ms. Tilson recognized today. She's one of my daughter's teachers and really changed the trajectory of her college interests. So just delighted to see that.
Thank you. Ms. Carney?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to piggyback on this. There's been a lot of great events going on at the schools and I too enjoyed going to the Chinese New Year at Desert Canyon and attending the National Junior Honor Society celebration at Tonalea. And then I had a lot of fun at the Laguna Steam Night and Principal Kelly there was so gracious and hauled me all around and I was trying, making the ice cream and doing all the stations and it was really great. And that community just seemed so happy and it was really busy and just a great night.
Agree on all accounts for the programs I got to go see and be a part of. At this point, are there future agenda items? Hearing none?
No, wait, there is one.
Sorry, I did...
That's okay. I just want to make sure that we have the executive session on for the...
The resignation.
For the resignation that was not accepted.
Okay. And you'll follow up with Gladys on that. You send that in as a... Don't we have to do that in writing?
Well, I'm just reiterating what was said as a board. I don't know, I can, but I don't know that it's my agenda item. It's just, I just want to make sure that we do have that down since it was done earlier in the evening.
And I'd just like to reinforce, I think the sense of the board that we really want to use our study sessions as study sessions, not as another board meeting where we do ordinary business, but really use as an opportunity to do deep dives. So if, you know, if there's work to be done to solicit what our respective topics of interest are. Because I know it takes time for the board, for the leadership to prepare for those.
All right. Hearing no others. The date of our next meeting is Tuesday, March 4th at 6 o'clock. It is a regular governing board meeting here in Corinna, Nada High School. So I look forward to seeing everybody then and I wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day where whatever love you have, you are honored and filled with. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.